Are we not recording? Well, that's okay. By the time people are listening to the recording, the boil water advisory will be moved. Well, I'd like to make a brief comment. I've heard from three of my fellow board members that they are concerned about my communications with Dave Lutton, the owner of the Sloan Kingsley land, and Sean Keough, the mayor of the city of Dexter, to which the Sloan Kingsley property is immediately adjacent. Knowing of these concerns among some of my colleagues, I prepared a report on this matter. It is included in the meeting packet along with a related report from trustee Riser in his capacity as the board representative to the land preservation commission. Mayor Keough reminded me that he reached out to me as soon as he was contacted by Mr. Lutton in 2022. He wanted to make clear from the start that any annexation proposal would be discussed with Syo Township before moving forward with the Dexter City Council. Those conversations preceded Mr. Lutton's initial presentations to Dexter City Council and Syo's Board of Trustees in July 2022. The dialogue since then has been driven by Mr. Lutton as he sought to figure out how to shape a proposal that could succeed. While this project is unique, it is also similar to other development projects where developers talk with the township to figure out what they want to propose. Once they are ready, then they present their proposal. Sometimes they get feedback to a concept and then go back to the drawing board. It is up to the developer when to start the formal planning process. I realized that some members of the board were alarmed to learn of the revised concept when Mr. Lutton presented it to the LPC on April 13th. If the project had not included a sale to the LPC, then it might have arrived first to the Board of Trustees. In any case, I regret that this LPC presentation came as a surprise. That was not the intent. The expectation was always that Mr. Lutton would bring his proposal back when he was ready, and starting with the LPC seemed appropriate. Mr. Lutton has now submitted to the city of Dexter his request for annexation of 45 acres out of the 237 total. This is his right as a property owner of land immediately adjacent to the city. The mayor of Dexter has indicated from the start that he wants to talk with Syo about any annexation. So I propose that we add an agenda item immediately after the presentations on the Sloan Kingsley land to consider forming a committee of two board members to represent the township in discussions with representatives of the city of Dexter regarding the 45 acre annexation request. My nominees would be trustees Riser and Noel, but I'm open to other suggestions.
That's going to propose the-- what is your motion, Will?
Well, that would be an agenda item. It would be a motion to create a two-member committee.
But we're on adoption of the agenda.
Right, right. So it would go after the presentations on the Sloan Kingsley.
You are not-- add an item. And what is it called?
Committee to negotiate with the city of Dexter.
For a second?
Pardon?
Can you ask for a second?
I guess, is there a second to add that as an agenda item to the agenda?
I'll second it. Sorry, Donna, if you want to.
Okay, so move by Hathaway, support by Carrie. I guess we can-- can we-- do we want to consider each agenda?
Let's consider this one alone.
All right, all right.
Is this I three?
This would be I three.
I agree.
I want to ask a procedural question. So some of this was included in the report that you had in our package.
Yes.
Is this in lieu of the supervisor's report? What you just stated?
No, that was a statement to add something to the agenda and to address some concerns. There's a lot more detail in the report.
And are you apologizing to the board?
Well, I expressed regret.
I know you didn't. I'm asking you, are you apologizing to the board?
Well, I don't think there's really anything to apologize for.
Let's get this way and get to reports because we have children here.
Okay. I just want to suggest, I want to-- I think this is fine to-- at a committee, I would-- but I certainly don't think the township has said yay or nay or up or down or anything about being annexed by the city, and so I wouldn't use the word negotiate. So I would offer a friendly amendment twofold to add the item to committee to represent Syo Township in any annexation discussions.
Well, that's a friendly amendment to me. Is it a friendly amendment to you, trustee Carrie?
Okay. And I would also suggest that we put this under reports. H2, and the reason is, I think that's where we'll talk about process, and I don't want the proposal that Mr. Lutton has brought to be muddied by process. I'd like us to deal with our process first and then separate it so we can actually talk about the substance.
Well, we could put under new business as well.
I'd like to have it before the presentation.
Before we hear what the presentation-- before we hear the presentation, you want to have a discussion about how we're going to deal with it?
Well, the reason is because Mr. Lutton submitted a letter to the city of Dexter to annex us last night. That is of utmost concern to me, and I think every Syo resident. That is what I want to talk about. We certainly have a planning commission process, an LPC process to deal with the other aspects. That's the extraordinary aspect. I would suggest we do that as H2.
Well, I don't find that to be a friendly amendment. I think it really-- the discussion of the committee and how we move forward should really follow the presentation, and I don't understand why we would want to have that discussion in an uninformed manner before we had the presentation and the opportunity to ask questions of the developer.
We could do the presentation, and then we'll just decide not to do any of this.
We could.
Folks.
I don't care where it goes.
Don't we usually move the agenda, and then has that agenda been even moved?
No, this is Will's amendment to the agenda.
Is there an amendment on the floor right now?
There is. It's to place this item as I-- I guess it would be I three following the presentations on the Sloan Kingsley land.
So I don't think it makes that much of a difference because we know what Mr. Lutton's going to say probably because he presented to LPC last Thursday, and he presented to Dexter yesterday, and he's got a written thing, and if he varies much from that script, I'll be everybody here at Coca-Cola. So I mean, whether we do this right now or whether we do this before we move to adjourn, I don't think it makes a dime's bit of difference. Let's put it wherever, and let's get onto the meat of the matter if we could.
And John, if I could, I would suggest it's important to have it before that plan. I want to separate the nonsense we have created for the developer and everybody else from the actual substance of it.
How about here's the middle ground. Let's move new business in between reports and presentation, and then we'll put this under new business.
Fine.
Okay, is that cool?
It's basically the same thing.
Is that okay with you, Will?
Look, fine, it's fine. There's no point debating this endlessly. I just think it's silly to--
I will move the agenda as amendment.
Well, wait a second. Whoa, whoa, whoa. There's further changes to the agenda.
Okay.
So if-- so we've--
Will was just getting started, John.
So let's finish the-- under new business, that's the committee to discuss.
Yeah, so K1, committee to represent Syo Township in any annexation discussion, K1.
So that would be--
K1 following reports.
New business, all right.
It really should be annexation discussion and negotiation.
If there's a negotiation.
Let's start with annexation discussion.
Yep.
All right. So the other change to the agenda is the removal of item G4 from the consent agenda that will allow an opportunity for the DDA board to discuss that and--
Approve it.
And confirm that it is authorized by the DDA board before it comes to the Syo Township.
Things to say about that, though. So how do-- do I have to show up the DDA to discuss?
Well, it'll come back to the board here on May 9th as an action-- as an item, as an action item. So it's just delayed. You'll still have an opportunity to speak to it if you choose.
May 9th?
Yes.
It's G--
Or you can come to the DDA meeting, or both.
I'll do both.
Okay. All right, so that item is proposed to be removed from the agenda, and then there's an addition to the consent agenda, which I believe you prepared, clerk Flintoff.
Yeah, I have a new item, authorization to enter into contract negotiations with a candidate for manager, Joyce Parker. I'd be happy to add this to either consent or to new business. Donna, do you have a preference?
No, so obviously, everybody understands.
Okay, then I would offer it on consent.
So this would become G7?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other--
Yes.
Changes, okay.
Sorry. I would like to pull KBK from the consent agenda to discuss, please.
Okay, so new business.
Is that now K2?
So we keep the same letters, just for my own sanity, and we put G6.
So G6 could go under new business.
Yeah.
So that would be-- would follow--
Follows K1.
Yeah.
K1.
To G6.
Okay. Okay. All right, if I get lost later, help me out.
I got it, yeah.
All right. So are there any other changes to the agenda before we-- all right. The agenda is moved by Riser, support, support by Noel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved as amended.
We need a roll call if it involves authorizing funds or not.
Well, when we get to a vote to authorize.
Okay.
Yes. So that brings us to communications to the Board of Trustees.
Included. I don't have any other comments.
All right, that brings us to public comments. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Riser, will you serve as our timekeeper, please?
Oh, yeah. Mistakenly brought my phone tonight. Okay.
Is there anyone present? We usually start with those who are present in the hall, and then we turn to those who are participating remotely. Those who are present in the hall, if you want to make a public comment, please come up, have a seat at the table, and you have three minutes.
My name is Dave Spicer, Syo Township president. Yesterday, I noticed there was a large amount of water in my backyard. It was actually a flood. My neighbor is the same way. So I called today to find out if they drained the water tower. Found out today, yes, they did drain the water tower. So I am trying to find out if there's a way that they can change the way that that water flows so my backyard doesn't flood every time they drain out that water tank-- storage tank. And I wondered if the trustees got my email that I sent this afternoon.
Yes.
Okay. And my other is going to be on Heritage Woods. I believe every step should be taken to require any development to tie into a local sewer system if one could be available. No matter how much money is spent to clean up a contaminated site, the damage has already been done. It only seems to be the proper way to keep the aquifer safe. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
We'll look into the water tower issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, sure.
That's news.
I'm a 525 acre row.
I know where you are, and I'm struggling to figure out the connection, but we'll find out.
Yeah, it comes out through a creek or something through there. I don't know what it is. I think it's all the water that comes off the highway too comes out through there.
Yeah, I don't know, but we'll look into it. Thank you for going into our questions.
So if there's anyone else who would like to speak during public comment, please come up.
Hello, Kathleen Brand, Syo resident. I'm speaking on behalf of Syo physically concerned residents. Can we have an update on hiring the finance director? This has been mentioned, it's four weeks now, and we've seen no action. You said you had somebody. What's going on? Anybody?
We'll have some reports later on.
Okay. As usual, I think somebody is slow-walking in. What about status on the Michigan Department of Treasury Enhanced Reporting? Have they reached out yet? That's troubling. That's troubling. Okay, I sent a letter to the board regarding the DDA meeting. I was at that meeting. I recorded the meeting on my phone. There was Zoom difficulty, so our normal recorders were not available, but I have a record of that. So I'm going to read this meeting-- or this letter. So in reviewing the agenda item for this, there's an error. DDA has not approved Dino Drive paving. You had it as agenda item G4. So on March 13th, DDA met-- meeting a budget was approved for four specific roads. This is not one of those roads. They approved $18,000. They did not approve resurfacing Dino Drive. I was in attendance at the March 13th meeting and recorded it. I can share my recording if anyone is interested in reviewing. The meeting minutes for this meeting are correct as posted on the Syo website. The minutes make no mention of approving Dino Drive. I was also in attendance in meetings in 2022 when Dino Drive was recommended by Mr. Hathaway. During these prior meetings, the DDA approved-- can someone please turn their--
Somebody's speaker is on? Oh, she's working on it.
All right, I'm going to take a little more time. It's still going.
Paula?
Yeah.
She's working on it.
Sorry. I was trying to get close to the action.
And I was at the Dexter meeting yesterday.
Can I suggest that you take it out in the hall to work on it?
Yeah, I'm going to just turn it all the way off.
That's another alternative.
Sorry about that. No apologies, but the screen isn't working.
Well, I don't mind this being reviewed. I was at the Dexter council meeting last night, and they have the most polite procedure for letting people speak. First of all, they give them five minutes, 10 minutes if you have a presentation, and the mayor is so kind as to say, if you go a little bit over, no problem. Yep. Okay, so I'm going to finish reading my letter. I was also in attendance at DDA meetings in 2022 where Dino Drive was recommended by Mr. Hathaway. During those prior meetings, the DDA approved paying for 50% of the cost with the stipulation that the business owners of this road contribute the other 50%. This plan was carried forward to the point of requesting contributions from Dino Drive businesses. Some of those businesses did contribute checks to Syo, which I believe were subsequently refunded to those few businesses. At those meetings, more than once during public comment, I stated my objection to using general fund dollars for a business road in the DDA, and I made a comparison to a neighborhood sand. As expressed previously, general fund dollars should not be used on business roads. It's my understanding that the revolving fund was originally created to fund small homeowner SAD project, and the fund was seeded with money from the general fund. Mr. Hathaway is now attempting to subvert public funds to the Dino Drive project. Mr. Hathaway's unilateral action to move forward with this project should be reviewed seriously by the board for appropriate process and behavior. Respectfully, I signed it with my name. I have an asterisk here. Asterisk, it should be further noted that Mr. Hathaway has refused my request to record DDA meetings. Rob Pattinson and Pam Boyd make every effort to record these meetings so the public can review actions of the DDA. I'm now asking the board to compel recording of DDA meetings going forward. The board should be aware that DDA is the only Syo body not recording their sessions. This is very troubling for transparency and accountability. Okay, I also want to talk about Sloan Kingsley. I was at the-- I attended via Zoom the LPC meeting when the discussion was broached about Mr. Lutton's desire to have Dexter annex part of his property. And during that discussion, there was a discussion of a friendly annexation, the Agreement 425, and a hostile annexation. These are words that were used during that meeting. Mr. Lutton has put in place the hostile process. We just find today as citizens that he submitted a letter to city of Dexter Community Development Manager, please accept this letter as a formal request for annexation. I want the public to know that a 425 is a friendly process, involves discussions, negotiations, concessions, a time limit on any agreed annexation. A hostile one does not. Syo does not get to negotiate. That is a permanent annexation, not subject to a time limit, as is the Agreement 425. So with this new committee, you're suggesting I request a citizen representative on that Sloan Kingsley commission, and I volunteer for that position. We need someone to look after the discussions that occur. I have a history, a timeline of actions that Mr. Hathaway took regarding this, and he purposely, I believe, torpedoed the 425. He stopped talking about that in the fall of last year. He repeatedly said to the mayor of Dexter, there was no interest in this board. In the LPC meeting, there was comment that one board member was opposed to a 425. Now, you really should go back and look at that meeting, because I did. There were four people opposed, four of the five in attendance.
He just remembers names.
Yeah.
There were-- wait, please, I'm-- there was trustee Jerome. He gave a history and wondered how it could possibly happen. There was trustee Noel. She had similar concerns and questions. And trustee Palmer expressed very similar concerns. So what we see in Mr. Hathaway's dialogue with Dexter is that he is defaming one of our officials, and he has taken the Agreement 425 off the table. As residents, we should be very concerned that Mr. Lutton is going to shove this down our throats. I know he's in attendance, but I don't think his actions are honorable as a Syo resident. Thank you very much.
All the public comments, and then we'll have--
I think it would be appropriate right now.
On with the public comments. We have a long agenda. We have a lot of stuff.
Can we please allow a little discussion, though?
We'll allow some time for response. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comments?
To the mayor of Dexter, he's a much kinder--
Please come on up and have a turn.
Linda Smith, as a representative for the Local Roads Advisory Committee, I wanted to remind the board that there is a pending date coming up with Washtenaw County Road Commission road agreements for 2023 that we wanted to encourage to be looked at and taken advantage of again this year. In the February 1, 2023, meeting for the Local Road Advisory Committee, we had a resolution which read, "The Local Road Advisory Committee recommends the Syo Township Board of Trustees allocate $780,000 from the township-wide SAD funds for the Washtenaw County Road Commission 2023 Local Road Improvement Agreement." Included in this expectation is roughly $100,000 in local matching funds from the Washtenaw County Road Commission towards those road improvements. I realize there's a lot of other pieces that fall into this particular decision, but it is a time-sensitive issue, and we don't want it to fall to the wayside and be forgotten. We would be leaving almost $100,000.
No, it was allocated. It's already allocated to other roads.
Trustee Carrie, we don't--
Well, you know what? I'm the chair of the Road Advisory Committee, so I think this is inappropriate. I mean, you're a citizen.
Public comment is up to the public.
As a representative to the Road Advisory Committee. So again, it's just another example. Go ahead, Linda.
Thank you. I also wanted to make a comment, just as a member of the DDA, that within our 2023 budget, we did leave the Dino Drive allocation that we had put into the 2022 budget and carried it forward. It was not mentioned specifically within the budget. It was just carried forward. There is money there for a partial payment of Dino Drive improvements, but not a full Dino Drive improvement. Yes.
I just-- I misheard you. Did you say that it was left in the DDA budget?
Carrying forward.
Minus the $18,000 that's already been approved, the speech fair and transparent.
Do you have to move further comments?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
Hey, everybody. A few things real quick. First off, I encourage you to return the site plan SP 21021 to the Planning Commission for further review and discussion. Mr. Urbano and the rest of his resident group have been coming to these meetings now for over a year. I've specifically asked, I think this is my third time, according to my notes, to have this referred back. I know they've asked many, many more times, and I have-- would be only fair and respectful to have Doug, as well as really OHM and Stacy and her team take a look at everything for the stormwater issue, the storm sewer issue. Having something that's seven feet high doesn't have a backup power when we have electrical grid issues in our township and this area in general is very concerning. Piling the investment report, and thank you, Deputy Kirk Gillis, for emailing to me. Well, appreciate it. Administrator Thompson, one of the things we asked last time. I know from the sounds of it, there is going to be a permanent candidate coming forward. That'll be actually my points coming up in a moment. But if you could write a report as far as what happens in between meetings from your angle, I think a lot of us would be very interested to hear from subjects you handle. Next off, was this hiring your finance director? Was this hiring a permanent administrator candidate? Also, just something I thought of here. If we can create a checklist to ensure, it sounds like there might have been some human error involved with the water tower problem, or valve being open or not closed, or in whatever position it wasn't supposed to be. It sounds like something we could have a checklist for and a process developed to have double checks to make sure it doesn't happen again. That would be awesome. One thing the county does, is they use Everbridge, is their emergency notification system. I'm not sure if we can pile onto their contract or tie into it in some way. There's also other providers like Nixle that other counties in Michigan use to notify citizens when boil water happens, or traffic incidents, or other things that might be a problem. Welcome to the Scouts. You're going to get to see how government works. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad, sometimes people make mistakes. It's important to learn from them and to come up with a plan to fix it. On that note, attendance is important. Trustee Brazil is missing again. On that note, tenants is important, trustee Brazil is missing again. Welcome to the representatives from Eagle. And family supervisor Hathaway, I did read through the entire packet, it was long. I agree with you that road funding is a problem. Funding for a lot of things seems to be a problem, unfortunately. I still think there is some opportunity around community development and block grants, especially after listening to. That's real township supervisors speak about what work they've done with those as far as getting other. Want to haves and nice to haves in their community so that that way they have funding for roads. I just see some more work done around that. Still think ultimately the one point six million dollars should be returned because ultimately it doesn't fundamentally fix the problem, I mean. It's a truth, thanks, everybody.
Hi Kathy Spicer, five to five B per row, I wasn't going to say anything, so I might be a little shaky voice. I wanted to say thank you for the oversight that we're going to hear about the onsite water facility. Heritage Woods involves our property, Dave Spicer's mine and Eugene Katz. And. Our lives and our property is very, very impacted. In not the best of ways with the developer. And so this is going to be a good explanation for passing and getting the development that's behind our properties. Taken care of and the future of our properties. That we hope gets developed like we planned, but we're kind of pushed against a wall by the Boulevard that's being put in. So we don't know how well we're going to ever develop or be able to sell. But it may have to have the same kind of wastewater facility for our hunk of land. And then there's this one for Heritage Woods and it is something to look at. There's a lot of things that impact our property with this. And this is only one aspect, thank you for the education we're going to hear tonight. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Larry Murray, I know most of you, he's probably my brother, most of all of you do. So, hey, thanks for your time, just to, for a brief second though. My students chat, or I'd like to suggest you go back to five minutes and be done with this Zoom business. So you can take that up another later, at a later date. So all sorts of issues, so like I'm talking about the special assessment district, the roads is S A D. Like others you've heard from, it's about to end or it has ended. I would like to add that I would, my position, I think the project should be ended as of today and that the money is returned to the taxpayers. It's not about the money, it's about good governance. The intent of the S A D was to fix a couple to a couple of projects, West Liberty flooding and North Delhi, it was to. Upgrade gravel roads that have been neglected for years and it was a couple noted minor projects and. And do road maintenance, well, those have all been completed as far as I know. What's important is there was a specific project list. That project list. Here, which you probably all see, and I think it's in your packet somewhere. It. It was presented, it was, it was in all board packets, it was presented to the public at the public hearing. And it was published online by M Live back in two thousand thirteen. The project list specifies the roads to be improved, the type of improvement, as well as the maintenance items. It was that list that was the basis of this resolution that said. The board is hereby approve the plans of the improvements of the township's road system as prepared and presented. This is prepared and presented, nothing more, nothing less. As a note on the end date, I guess that's what you're discussing, that's what I read in the cover sheet tonight. It's something about whether this can go on, the million whatever is left over can go on, can continue to go on. There's a note also in this resolution, no further time should be granted for consideration of this matter because of the time constraints relative of commit to. To commencement and completion of proposed project, which means. The board intended or knew that there was an end date for this special assessment district. Also regarding the ten years. On page two of this project list, it says that there's a ten-year maintenance program, it doesn't say eleven, doesn't say twelve, it says in black and white, ten years. So again, I ask you, and then as prepared, I heard just entered, I think I heard right, I was in the back of the room. Eight hundred thousand is being requested. The project's been completed, so consider that when you're talking about discussing this. I'm curious, I haven't seen what the eight hundred thousand includes, I will probably later. So again, I ask you to please on the S A D project and return the remaining funds to the taxpayers. But before you do that, there was that two thousand and seventeen resolution that made an amendment. That allowed for the township to move up to like half a million dollars from the S A D to TAP. For TAP projects. It's my request that you revisit that resolution, first resolution and reverse any monies that have been sent to TAP. TAP wasn't established till two thousand and seventeen, so I find it really interesting that that resolution that the board signed, agreed to. Said the inclusion of TAP funding was inadvertently omitted from the original S A D resolution. You know, TAP was a thing and four years later, so anyway, I appreciate your time, you got other things to deal with. Sounds like you got in full play tonight. I didn't know this was just for discussion tonight, I thought it was an action item, I was out of town for a couple of weeks, so. And, but I'm glad that Zoom isn't working because I didn't want to be on camera.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
One in the resolution, yeah.
Please come up if you would like to speak during public comment. If there's no one else who's, well, okay, please come up.
I was waiting for somebody else who I thought was going to speak. I'm here again to speak for the Parkwood people, came over and I looked at the. The whole project map. And I have some concerns what's even happening with these homeowners associations. And I'm going to start off with your recall, Mr. Hathaway. When I passed up recall for you, not in anyone's mailbox, I get a call from my HOA. President, well, first he sent me an email that I ignored. Then secondly, I got a phone call. And I, I said to him, oh, Rick Stites. He's a very nice person. I said, oh, are you calling to sign the petition? And he said, no, I'm just calling to find out who was passing it out, which I found very interesting. Now that we have this whole park road thing going on. All of a sudden, we went after Roy Townsend gave his annual speech, I, I've, I lived there twenty years, which is surprising. But I did have the beautiful woods behind me and, and I still do. And. I have some issues with the park road. That people aren't informed exactly what it's going to entail for their backyards, it's not going to affect my backyard. And as far as financially. I've gone to get legal advice, I got legal advice when I had my. Deed initially, but it's interesting that the Parkwood HOA. And there's this much smaller HOA, it's not allowing the people who are concerned about flooding. And the density to be involved there and I go, what's going on? And now our HOA has a buffer, it sounds like the Godfather too. But they have a buffer system now where they, where I have to pay seven dollars and fifty cents to get someone. And, and now we're not allowed to go to meetings. And we can only have a, it sounds so familiar, fifteen minute. Be involved in the first fifteen minutes of a meeting to give a comment, so. As you know, I, I'm very concerned when things, I feel it's a freedom of speech thing. And when trustee Jerome, who was an independent who I voted for. Also voted for cutting down public comment time, I was very concerned about that, I don't. I realize sometimes we do have to have closed meetings. But I go, what is happening that? The DDA, you know, they, they had a partial recording on the community news on the YouTube. And I, and I really want this information where people actually know what's going on. Because I feel the newsletter is not real informative a lot of times, unfortunately. And makes things, it's like me, no offense, Mr. Thompson, you're a great interim administrator, very polite. But we should have some kind of system when we have a boiled water that it gets out to the restaurants and other people. I personally drank a glass of water before I saw CIO community news and then I walked around my neighborhood. All right, but I want to say the project really needs to go back, they've come for a year, these people at Parkwood. Please send it back to the planning commission. And there's a lot of onsite sources and problems with that too.
Thank you, thank you Paula.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none, is there anyone participating remotely who would like to speak?
Thank you, Pam Boyd, a CIO resident. Terry, in the Zoom program, there should be a button for the Zoom administrator to turn the cameras on or off. John, my husband John was running a L P C meeting last year and discovered that. So it's actually in the Zoom program. Moving on, supervisor Hathaway, your supervisor report on Sloan Kingsley. Should have been a standard at each board meeting, which you haven't done. I hope this event helps you to be more forthcoming at future meetings with a very concise supervisor's report. Thank you, Kathy, for your public comments, I support the township recording the DDA meeting going forward. The DDA may not appreciate residents such as myself who have attended meetings. All meetings should be treated the same. Residents want transparency and recording meetings equals transparency, sorry Larry. We like the Zoom. Now regarding the S A D, question. Do you have proof that my road, Linden Lane, was maintained or improved by CIO Township? In the ten years this S A D was valid? If you don't, I want my money back. Why would you engage the wrath of residents that guarantees the township would be on the receiving end of a lawsuit? Of which I would be part of if you decide to keep the funds. The township S A D process in twenty thirteen was poorly written and poorly implemented. Residents should not be penalized for the wording that leads me to believe the township, in exchange for my eighty-five dollars a year. Would maintain my road on some sort of schedule over the following ten years. It's not hard to give the money back. Man up, admit the document was poorly written and credit each address that paid into this mess, thank you very much.
Thank you, next up is Pat Stein, Jack, you can go on.
Good evening, Pat Stein, longtime resident of CIO Township. Mr. Hathaway. You are not a lone agent that represents the thinking and intentions of the other members of this board. You are a member of a board of seven members who need to always be mindful of what is best for the CIO residents. Please modify your behavior to reflect these facts. You know, your failure to recognize the expectation of an apology to your fellow board members is very disturbing. Your failure to apologize speaks volumes. Your failure to apologize speaks largely to your weak character. Please consider stepping down. For someone who has had so much training and education in conflict management. You tend to cause so much conflict that it's appalling, good night.
Thank you, next is Jonathan Greenberg, Jonathan, you can go ahead.
Hi, Pat, everybody. Pat, you're wasting your breath on him, just my experience. Dear CIO trustees, I'm getting a lot of feedback, is there a second microphone on? Board of trustees, I sent you a note on the seventeenth of April. In the morning and I hadn't heard back, so maybe you didn't get it, I'll, I'll read it out loud to you now. Your CIO Board of Trustees. I'm writing to you on behalf of the parcel owners in CIO Township who have contributed money through the Special Assessment District of twenty thirteen. And not received an improvement. Owned two parcels on a connector road that was not improved during the ten-year SAD. I currently live on one of them. When I sold my other parcel to Trailwoods. I was forced by the township to pay off the assessment seven years early. So you're welcome, Trailwoods, but I did pay two full shares for the SAD. Most other parcels are not on connector roads, but also paid into the SAD and received no benefit. As you know, the SAD was board approved September twenty-fourth, twenty thirteen to fund the improvement and maintenance of connector roads for ten years. The role was set at eighty-five dollars a year for ten years, equalling eight hundred and fifty dollars as a charge to all parcels. The first payment was collected December first, twenty thirteen with the winter taxes. The SAD expired with the last payment of winter taxes, December first, twenty twenty-two. The collection of funds over the last ten years is creating an excess of one point six to two million dollars. And according to Public Act one eighty-eight, forty-one point seven three two, section twelve. Excess funds more than five percent shall be returned. This surplus shall be prorated and shall be refunded, there's no vagary in a word like shall. This does not give the B O T a choice, you shall return it immediately to those who have paid and received no benefit. That's a key component of our new SAD. More importantly, this was, I'll, I'll add that later. The Township Board of Trustees' main statutory duty is a fiduciary responsibility to date. The excess from the expired SAD has not been returned. If the Township Board of Trustees keeps these funds, it will be a breach of your oath. Fiduciary responsibility and violation of the state law that I mentioned earlier. I am demanding that the township return the funding collected under Michigan Statute, Public Act one eighty-eight of nineteen fifty-four. To the rightful parcel owners immediately. Please respond by returning the funds within thirty days or I will obtain my refund through different means. Finally, the level of difficulty in returning the funds is not a determining factor. Our treasurer should know that and avoid repeating this when trying to create reasons to keep funds. Thank you and your time and immediate attention to this manner, sincerely Jonathan Greenberg, give us our money back, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, next is Bill Doty, Billy, go ahead.
Thank you, my name is Bill Doty, four sixty-five Wood Grove Drive in CIO Township. Thank you all for listening to us Parkwood residents for the last year. It's been six months already since you approved the resolution to discuss the return of this project S P twenty-one oh twenty-one to the planning commission. Can you please add this to your agenda, one of your near-term agendas to take this, to have this matter taken care of? It would be prudent to ask the planning commission to walk the talk on carbon neutrality for this high-density site. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, next is Rob Pattinson, Rob, you can go ahead.
First of all, thank you Supervisor Hathaway for the partial supervisor's report in tonight's agenda packet. You've been talking to the developer for over a year. Why did we not hear about this in previous supervisor reports? Please make it a common practice to have a complete supervisor's report every month by advising what you are working on. Going back through the records, the last supervisor's report I can find is from September of twenty twenty-two. That is much too long between reports, I hope you make it a monthly report. For example, what has been done to restore the credit rating that was downgraded last year? Is that in tonight's supervisor's report? Please also make it a common practice for the township administrator to share a report of his activities each month as well. Is there a quantum environmental dioxide testing program going on this summer? Oh, we found twenty-seven new wells that have dioxide poisoning. Showing that the dioxide plume is larger than it was mapped previously. Are there any plans to expand that testing and find out what other wells are poisoned? Since Supervisor Hathaway shared information in the agenda packet. Since Supervisor Hathaway shared information in the agenda packet about the contents of the closed session meeting, I assume that is now public record, and we will be hearing about the details of that meeting. By going into closed session, you have made an already difficult situation much worse because it looks like you're hiding and afraid of something, and that doesn't do anything to resolve the issue. Eagle representatives are at the meeting tonight. Will they answer the questions about the township's responsibility for wastewater treatment? Does the 20, does the 2012 case of the Department of Environmental Quality versus Worth Township by the Supreme, Michigan Supreme Court, mean that townships are ultimately responsible for all wastewater treatment? And the, and the proposed resolution denying responsibility for Heritage Woods plant is meaningless. In other words, when a wastewater treatment, when a private wastewater treatment plant fails, it's ultimately, according to the Supreme Court, the township's responsibility to clean it up. And once a property is, once one property is approved for onsite wastewater, does that set the precedent for all future projects that will be proposed to the township? Therefore, your discussions on this issue with Heritage Woods are going to set the precedent for the future of projects in SIO Township. $11,907.50 were paid to Foster Swift for the month of March. We spent somewhere between $130,000 and $50,000 in 2022 to Foster Swift while they were attending meetings. What, what happened in the month of March that required $12,000 worth of service from Foster Swift? And then lastly, thank you Supervisor Hathaway for making J2, the Roads SAD, a discussion-only item. There needs to be a lot of discussion in the open before any actions are taken. Making it discussion-only is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
In that case, we can move on to approval of the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. We did want to allow some time for members of the board of trustees who wanted to respond to any of the public comments to have time to do so. Trustee Noel.
I want to respond to two comments now. Rob, in terms of ongoing dioxane well testing in SIO Township, Eagle and Washtenaw County Health Department have expanded their testing in our area based on the testing that we did. So there will be more testing, but it will not be done by SIO Township. And it will not include the method 522. It will use a more sensitive method than the county health department has ever used before, but it's not quite as sensitive as method 522. And then I wanted to respond to Kathleen. Kathleen, I usually agree with most of what you say. However, I would disagree with your characterization of what happened at that July 26th board meeting when we heard a presentation from Dave Lein. So, I mean, I was there. I took notes. What I heard were questions from several board members, but we hadn't formed an opinion yet. We weren't saying, no, we don't want this. We had questions. I mean, Alec Jerome had a question. He said that he wanted clarity on the percentage of win for SIO residents in the process. That's a fair question. And Donna commented on traffic concerns. I asked questions about sewer capacity. And the sewer capacity issue is a huge issue here. So, I mean, those were all reasonable questions. So I just, I wouldn't say that the whole board was against this proposal. That's what I'm saying to you.
Thank you so much, and I apologize for saying that. I've been looking at that meeting, and you are absolutely correct. There were questions to be an ongoing process. So thank you for mentioning that.
And the, and the big concern was that the whole 243 acres was to be added. That, if that, I think it was 243 acres, and that was the biggest concern.
It's a completely different proposal than what we're hearing now.
I have an indication that Clerk Flintoff also would like to respond to comment.
Very briefly, the township board cannot compel the DDA to do much of anything. They are their own legal entity, and we can't compel them to record their meetings. We have a member here, Linda. We have the CEO here, Will. Please continue to advocate to them. They are required to abide by the OMA, but recording the meeting would be something they would have to adopt as a policy. Certainly easy to do. We encourage them to do it, but we cannot compel them to do it. Second point of information, it was about $8,000-ish is what Foster Swift charged for the memo on the 2013 Roads SAD. So that's what a big part of that bill was from.
And residents can attend any meeting and report in person, correct?
Oh, certainly, yes.
Yes.
And then I have a little follow-up. You asked about the Finance Director. As you know, I've asked about the Finance Director. Mark Brizozak brought the Finance Director. We, several of us have interviewed a number of them. There's one that I think a majority could live with and would have. So I would be comfortable bringing on him or her as soon as possible, but I don't know that we've coalesced around a candidate yet. I think a majority has, but I'm not certain of that.
Yeah, I would just, I would say we haven't talked about it. I have not coalesced around said candidate because.
That's why I said I don't think we have coalesced around a candidate.
Right. I wouldn't even suggest a majority might have.
Okay, so we're trying.
All right, let's move on then to approval of minutes. The first set of minutes is for the special meeting of April 11th. These are brief because it was mostly a closed session. Are there any corrections to the draft minutes for the special meeting on April 11th? If there are none, is someone prepared to move approval of those minutes?
I move there a support group.
Option rather. Okay, moved by risers, support by Noel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The minutes of the special meeting are approved. That brings us to the minutes of the regular meeting of April 11th. And here I have one correction. So under adoption of the agenda, it says. Says Hathaway also explained that after new information was received, it appeared that agenda item J2 was not necessary. And I, I think what I said, or I'm not sure exactly what the words were. It was not necessary for this meeting and could be kept together with the Heritage Woods final site plan, which was the original plan. So I would like to add that to that sentence. Is there, are there any other corrections to the minutes from the regular meeting of April 11th?
I move their adoption.
All right, moved by riser.
As amended.
As amended.
Support.
Support by Flintoff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Those minutes are also approved. That brings us to the consent agenda. There are, let's see. I won't go into all, everything that's in the consent agenda, but it does include payment of bills, and therefore we would have a roll call.
That's what I was asking about earlier. I move the, I move the consent agenda.
Okay, moved by riser.
Second.
Support by Carrie.
I have questions. You were asking about the one to be pulled out.
Oh, yeah, that's the G6, the KBK, and that's moved to.
The G6 and G4 are both removed, and G7 is added.
I just think it's good that we mentioned it in this point.
Will, can I just, for the public's benefit, read G7?
Sure.
G7 is a model motion to authorize trustee Brizoz, township attorney Thacker, and interim manager Thompson to begin negotiations with Joyce Parker for the position of township manager and to return to the Board of Trustees on May 9th with a proposed contract and conditional offer of employment.
So that is the added item. Please proceed to call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted.
That brings us to reports. Since that there is a desire to have some discussion, we already have, in some ways, addressed a question that I had thought we would talk about during reports, and that is the progress on the Finance Director search. We also have addressed, in another way, the search for the township manager. Are there any other comments or questions about reports in the reports agenda item?
Just a couple. I just want to note the great work of the Environmental Sustainability Task Force. They've got a whole plan here. I want to thank them for it. It's also available on the website, and they are looking for comments. Pretty quickly here, comments by May 1st. And so I want to make sure that all the members of the public board get back to them. Something I'm going to reach out to them about is the possibility of, of kind of an executive summary. That's some of the feedback I've gotten, some sort of kind of one pager for, for people who maybe aren't as educated about sustainability as much as these people clearly are. So that's one suggestion I'm going to make. Did anybody have any questions about the clerk's report?
Yes.
So you're starting first?
I don't know. Will, Will.
It doesn't matter. If, if someone has comments or questions, why don't we, since we started with it, talk about the clerk's report, and then we'll move on to others.
I had requested, okay, there, I'm sorry. In your report, it says clerk Jesse Flintoff may control, or may control who may or may not host to the journals, ledgers, and accounts of the township. So I made a little note, BSNA. Okay, instead, and then there's eight financial modules and whatnot. And I, I requested through email to the board to see your access, and it's repeated over and over again that you have full access. But this screenshot shows that you do not have full access. I want to make that clear to everybody. Okay.
I have the access. I've been reporting in every written.
Yeah, but when.
Everything I've said is true.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not true. It's just that a lot of us don't know BSNA.
Sure.
So you could, I'm not saying that you're not saying the truth, but we may not understand fully. But this clearly shows that you do not have access.
What screen is that? What's spoken?
The BSNA. It's just a screenshot of the BSNA.
Which module? I asked.
All the modules connect together, the eight modules.
I don't.
Because anything dealing with incoming cash, et cetera, the clerk.
Right.
Cannot have well access.
Right, which brings me to another point. The two of you are working on a policy, I understand.
We, we've had a meeting.
When will that be?
So I have, I apologize. Last four weeks I've been busy with other things, in all honesty. But I'm going to turn my attention to it and hopefully get some time with Donna.
But there is, there has been work done on it because I believe the.
You know, it's never been done before. No other jurisdictions have to do this before, so it's just taking some time, but it's coming along.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I'm glad there's something moving with that. Let's see, under finance, fund balance, the amount of, oh, this has to do with the Park Road SAD that, Will, you had called me to go over a couple of different SADs when I believe to be put onto the agenda, budget amendments, and right before the fiscal year was over. And, you know, I kind of feel manipulated because it was, the reason to do this was because to clean up, you, you said to clean up the SAD for the last year because we're moving into a new year. But then I suggested to you, like, why don't you talk to Rod? And because I remember him mentioning that we don't, you know, we can always make amendments. But then this was pushed through, and now it's, there's a lot of issues with this whole thing. So why did you want to put this on the agenda or to have this go through? And then the board voted on it. We didn't have the full information. We just went by, okay, well, we're going to amend the agenda or the budget.
Well, there's a lot in what you just said that I would take issue with. There certainly was no manipulation of anybody. The, the fund that we're talking about, and yes, I did meet with Rod Taylor afterward, you and I spoke, and I reached the same conclusion with him, which is that we didn't need to make all of the budget amendments that you and I had discussed because we could make those amendments later. They weren't time-sensitive. This one, however, has a little bit of time sensitivity to it because in this case, Fund 401 is for an SAD on a portion of Park Road kind of near your neighborhood, I believe. And it has finished collecting, and the project is finished. And the auditors told us in 2022 that it was imposed a problem because the account had a deficit of a little over $2,000. And if, it's one thing to have an SAD fund that is still collecting money and has deficit because then you're, you're making up that, that deficit. You're bringing in revenue, but if it's not bringing in any more revenue, you just have an account sitting there that is in deficit. And the auditor said, you got to fix that problem. So we first talked about this in 2022. Well, wait a second.
Okay.
You, if you want to say something, you can, in turn. But, but in any case, this was an issue that was raised in 2022. And because it was still hanging out there, tried to resolve it before we reached the end of the fiscal year so we wouldn't have an account that was still in deficit. That's a little different than the other SADs in the situation with those. So this one had a little bit of a time urgency to it, at least that was my understanding. And the reason that I brought it forward was to solve a problem that I understood to have been raised by the auditors and to do so in a way that allowed us to close out that account.
Okay, so the auditors had told, apparently had told us this before, but then we did the budget and we.
The auditors, I voted on this. There's nothing in any audit about this.
Okay, so, well, whatever, but I mean, apparently, if, if Will is saying that the auditors brought this to their, our attention before, but we had a whole budget meeting that this was never brought up. And then the clerk, one of our officials, you know, they has to do with funding, finances, was missing, and it was pushed on the agenda for us to vote on, so it's just kind of suspicious. I don't know. It's just, I think it's just, again, maybe it's just lack of administration, whatever. But, you know, it's, it's just concerning. It's just one more issue that we're always dealing with.
Well, if, if you assume that the information was correct, that it was something to be resolved before the end of the fiscal year, that was the last meeting at which we could do so. So there was nothing in terms of trying to game who was going to be at the meeting. It was, it had to do with the end of the fiscal year. Now, people can disagree about that. I sense that some people see it differently. And the clerk has raised another issue about this.
The legality.
Well, in any case, at the time, the, I approached it with the understanding that we were trying to resolve before the March 31st, end of the fiscal year. And the March 28th meeting was our last opportunity to do that.
Did you speak with legal counsel about it? Because now we're kind of, you know, in trouble?
No, we're sorting it. As I said, I'm doing research with the attorney.
We're speaking with legal counsel now about it.
See, that's, that's the point.
Well.
Let's be fully prepared.
Okay. Are there any other further comments on the clerk's report? Okay, so why don't we move on to another report? Trustee Noel, I sense that you have.
I have one that I promise will be light when it's my turn.
Okay.
Well, why don't we do yours?
Well, I wanted to.
Trustee Noel is recognized. She has been waiting for an opportunity to speak. Please proceed.
Okay. Okay, as you know, I am concerned about the way we learned about this proposal on the Sloan Kingsley property.
I'm going to be repeating some of what some other people have already said. But you met many times over the last 12 months with Mayor Sean Keough, Dave Lutton, and others to discuss this property and potential annexation issues. You never reported on any of this to the Board of Trustees. This represents a total lack of transparency. You were never authorized by this board to attend these meetings or to make representations on behalf of this board or Scioto Township at any of those meetings. And I am going to want to hear from you. Did you make any representations on behalf of Scioto Township at these meetings? But I'm not done yet. Sean Keough has these meetings documented clearly in his reports to the Dexter City Council. Perhaps you could learn something from Sean Keough in terms of communication with your board. Back in July 2022, when we heard the presentation about this proposal, then a different proposal, but we were told that Dave Lutton was interested in a collaborative approach potentially with Scioto Township and Dexter, the two municipalities. There was a discussion about a working group. There was discussion about a 425 agreement. But nothing ever happened after that, and instead you had these private meetings with a small group of people. And I'm also wondering, why didn't you demand that Dave Lutton come and update the board, at least, even if he didn't have a new proposal or sent us an email updating the board? I mean, you you participated in these meetings without authorization and without communication to fellow board members. And I think this is very serious. It's egregious behavior. So we've talked about working as a team, this board, Mark Gresham likes to talk to us about working as a team. This isn't team behavior. This doesn't foster trust. Remember, we've talked about fostering trust as a group. You you've got to look at your behavior well. And that was part of what I asked, are you apologizing? Because I think an apology is due. And the fact that you don't see that is very concerning to me. That's it. I'm done. I'm going to have more to say later, but I'm done on this one.
I attended the Dexter meeting last night, council meeting, and I was only going to stay until after the public comments, but I ended up staying because I was fascinated with how they ran their their meetings. And it actually, they had, they had an issue between members and the mayor took time to actually discuss this with the whole board, with their whole commission or council, and just trying to get to the bottom of things, and it was the kind of the same discussion, but it wasn't as serious as what we deal with. And he he gives complete reports, and he kept saying over and over again, it was about transparency and openness, and that they are all to serve residents. Now, they they may have different ideas on how to serve residents or or ideas on a project, but they still work together, and there's, I think, I don't know, eight, seven, 10 of them. There's not seven, there's more than that. But um, and then afterwards, I stayed. I I kind of know the manager a little bit. And I was talking to him and the mayor, and Mayor Mayor Keough was very concerned that here we are, you know, we have these tile residents show or in in trustees and clerks show up, and we're upset because we're thinking that everybody's behind, working on this behind the scenes, and we're left out, and we don't know what's going on. And that wasn't the case at all. In fact, he said to me that he has been advising you, suggesting to you to keep your board informed, and he was surprised that we didn't know until the LPC meeting. And I feel bad for Dave Lutton because, you know, he, not only you're a SiO resident, so I have a hard soft spot for our SiO residents, but even if he was just a regular developer, you know, this is bad for him. We could have, and I've heard this from residents and from others that, you know, they're they're upset with Dave for going behind the scenes, and I don't think that's the case. So I I'm really, I am upset about this, and it's not the first time. We need to have supervisor reports. What are you doing? September was the last, I believe, September was the last report, and then then a lot of the reports are bashing a member, or it's justifying what you've done. I want to know what you're doing. The residents want to know what you're you're doing. You got to be doing something.
Other comments?
I can call it.
Oh, please.
So I want to be clear with Dave Lutton, with all of the public, Carrie, who I met last night. It's not just that the board didn't know in a formal way. We didn't know in any which way. I I spend hours with Will every week. We have regular attorney meetings. It's my observation that our attorney didn't know. It's my observation that our manager didn't know. It's not just that there wasn't a formality or some particular way of filling us in. And then I find out, okay, so the universe of of who knew about these conversations, as far as my count goes this week, is Will Hathaway, Barry Lannick, Doug Luon, and John Colbertson. And as far as I can tell, everybody thought that, you know, the communication was happening on our end, and it wasn't. Okay? And and I got to say, you know, when this was kind of drifted dripping out last week when we met on Monday in our attorney meeting, Will, I I thought, well, you know, we'll see, you know, I I thought, maybe it's not that bad. And then I got your supervisor's report. And I'll tell you what I was so troubled by. One, Will, thank you for putting together a report and documenting things. That is the right thing to do. What I'm concerned about is the language and the perspective in it. When I read things such as Barry and I advocated instead for sale of the Sloan Kingsley land to SciO for combined open space preservation and agricultural conservation, the LPC's long established goals. However, the gap between appraised value and Mr. Lutton's desired sale price remains a challenge to 100% conservation. Or before, when although he was supportive of the goal of land key, Mr. Lutton, supportive of the goal of land conservation, it became clear that Mr. Lutton was seeking more in a sale of land than the appraisals would justify. This posed a financial challenge for SciO. No, it does not pose a financial challenge for SciO. That is a financial challenge for Mr. Lutton. And this begs the question, I can't tell you, I mean, I have, you know, in frustration yelled out loud, who is he working for? And so our duty is to serve the residents. So when Mr. Lutton came, from our perspective, Mr. Lutton out of nowhere last July, because that's how it was presented to us, and I say, my starting point on annexation is no. It's because our duty is to protect our land, protect our tax base. So unless there's something in it for SciO that is better than maintaining the land, you know, then it's going to be no. And I didn't hear something better from you last July, quite frankly. So what I want to say also to Mr. Lutton, to Barry Lannick, who's here, to Doug Luon, please, don't fall into these mistakes again. Please don't. Over communicate, over communicate, over communicate. A few guys meeting together, talking about public funds and private lands usually results in some very bad decisions. And here we are with a request to the city of Dexter last night for a hostile annexation. That's all.
Trustee Riser, you said you wanted to comment.
Yeah, it won't be that light, but on the Goodrich Theater has not been a movie theater for some time, and despite their efforts, they just can't find a tenant that wants to put a theater there. Apparently, we watch movies at home now. So that's a planned unit development or a PUD, and it's limited to being a movie theater, which means it's going to stay vacant unless and until somebody wants to put a movie theater back there. So they've been going back and forth with Carla Wartman, as well as the Planning Commission at these public meetings. And last night, the Planning Commission approved potential new uses for that parcel, including potentially multifamily, up to six acres or retail, but as part of a mixed use, not just retail only, but retail as part of a mixed use with either grocery, office, technology, lab components, medical office, dental office with mixed use, restaurant or bars as part of mixed use, and entertainment or indoor recreation or lodging. So there's something, hopefully, will be coming to that parcel, whether the owner can find these uses, but those are the uses that were approved yesterday at the Planning Commission. They'll come to this body, but I want to give you a heads up because up to six stories is, I don't think we we've done that in SciO yet, so that might be coming. Now, they might not be able to find someone who wants to put that, or the market might not support that, or, but but that's just something. Right, right. So so that's something, they know that they'd have to get that through through the fire department. So that this is just a heads up that something like that could be coming to this body.
How many acres are back there? Do you know?
No, but I did. It's probably something I can get access to. Let me look for it.
Is there a question? Is there a question or response to the report?
Yeah, quick question. John, on the Arby's Grove, Site Plan 21021, we did, in fact, it may have been, I can't remember. I don't think you were on the court quite yet.
No.
We passed, passed, no, but we passed a motion. I'm asking you to follow up on on this for us, if you would. We passed a a motion back in October, something like that, to direct our planning consultant to send it back or get more input from the the Planning Commission, and and he told us, you know, that wasn't quite the right process stuff, that we were still waiting for more, but I just want to say again, John, what can we do?
There's been a lot of changes since it was presented to the Planning Commission, and not only that, Bob Hyde, on the, he's the commissioner, found some interesting, something interesting in ordinance, zoning ordinance, and that needs to be reviewed.
I will let the board know.
I reviewed that.
That this, I will let the the commission know that this board is interested in having that come back to them for some sort of review.
Whatever's appropriate.
How do we do this?
That's not exactly the resolution that we intended.
No.
I'll take a look at the resolution, and then I'll bring up the resolution and say, hey.
We want to do something.
Remember.
They want to do whatever this says.
Remember, I updated this board. I had talked to Doug Luon about it. Doug told me that he believed the action had to come to this board formally, and our board had to direct the Planning Commission about what they needed to look at. What are the issues? Drainage, whatever. So that was what we were told, and the developer hasn't been pushing on this issue.
Isn't there a timeline?
Yeah, we have to be out of here by 11:00.
No, for the developer, you know, to come to present that from the time that the Planning Commission approved.
This isn't a PUD. Anyway, it's just more information.
Take any more of this body's time now. I will follow up on it. I'll look through the resolution, follow up and report back to both bodies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready. I could do the Galvin report.
Oh, all right.
But I want to say something because you never answered my question when I was asking you questions when I was speaking earlier. Have you made any representations on behalf of SciO Township in these meetings? With one, Barry Lannick, with any of these people? Have you made any representations?
What do you mean by representations?
What SciO Township would want to do.
Oh, well, I am always very clear that I'm one of seven votes on this board that I can't speak for SciO Township. I can only say how I would vote if if something came up, if I knew at that time. So I'm always very careful to couch everything in that way. And I think if you ask Mr. Lutton or anyone else who was at these meetings, that they would say that that is true. I'm always very careful. Now, I sometimes say, you know, I think these are issues that are of concern to certain board members that, you know, you, if if you could address those issues, then they might be pleased to have those issues addressed or something like that, but that's not a representation of SciO Township. That's just, you know, a representation of my perception of concerns of other board members.
Watch out for the clerk.
Um, okay, let me go on into the Galvin report.
Yes.
There is some news recently with Galvin. And there was a hearing last Thursday in front of Judge Connors with Eagle, the AG's office, and all of the intervenors. Washtenaw County, SciO Township, Huron River Watership Council. The AG's office in Galvin have negotiated a new consent judgment. The court hearing was on their motion to enter this new agreement. Judge Connors will enter the order and will not require any type of public comment. Eagle and Galvin have been asked to revise one sentence in the draft related to what is being proposed. The sentence relates to the CJ being characterized as protective of the public health. And he's, Judge Carter said, he didn't want that sentence included because he had not made a determination that this new CJ was protective of the public health. The intervenors have until July 1st to file their complaints. We will need to schedule a meeting with Bill Stapleton within the next few weeks to discuss next steps. I know we've discussed it, but now we have a deadline, a firm deadline.
The deadline again is.
July 1st.
July 1st.
Remember, the complaint is drafted. It's already done.
So it sounds like we need to confer with legal counsel.
Yes.
Session.
Yes.
Do you recommend we schedule that as part of a regular meeting date or a special meeting?
I think it's going to be a fairly quick meeting.
So we could try and fit it in prior to a seven o'clock regular meeting? All right.
I haven't gotten available dates.
Why don't I work with you on scheduling that with.
Thank you.
With Bill Stapleton, and then we'll we'll add it to one of our upcoming meetings. Is there anything else?
I just want to thank Donna for your investment report.
Yes.
I was just going to say, Treasurer Palmer, thank you for your investment report. Do you want to add anything to it?
No, that's what it was, March 31st.
But I do have a question for you, Donna. Thank, yeah, thank you for the report. How, there was an email from a resident regarding a check I I that had, they had mailed on February 1st, and then it ended up going to the county, and then they were fine. So I I just wanted clarification on the process when checks come in and how those are. Checks come in the door.
Remember the auditor saying. Donna responded to that.
Sorry, but no, I was just curious about just.
The process?
The process, yes.
It come in the door and they're stamped. Came in today, the pile is stamped, today's date. That is the date used for posting payments. I know the instance that you are referencing, and so it went to the county because I cannot actually take in any money after February 28th.
Right.
So I will usually have to sign those over to the county treasurer, and I mail them right up. And I mail the envelope. We keep the envelopes. I mail all the information so they have whatever they need to do for recording. Now, their question was, I mailed this on February. Now, their question was, I mailed this on February 2nd. What did you do? Throw it in a drawer? Oh, I love that statement. Oh, no.
Well, that's why I wanted to clarify with the process.
It never got to us until, it was the middle week in March, I believe. So I called the county, I looked at, you know, first of all, I looked up in his tax screen, his document. And then I called the county and they said, oh, because they have the same program, they put the comments in there. They had the wrong address, Donna. And that is why it took a long time to get here.
Well, in a normal, let's say a normal, because people, there's a lot of people that pay by check, right? I mean, mine comes out of my escrow, so I don't even see it. But, so it comes in, so you receive it by mail, or they hand it to you, then it gets stamped, and then it goes into, does it go to somebody else to record as well?
Well, then they told me, you know, post all the cash receipts, close out that day. We use that date that was stamped as it walked in the door. And that's, that's the process.
And how often are checks deposited? What, every day? Does that they come in, I mean?
Not right now. We, usually it's maybe three times a week. We have, it just depends on the volume, but right now, for tax, it's minimal, and it just goes to the county, anyway.
Good, thank you. I don't, I didn't know the process, and I know that a lot of people.
You know, I invite all of the board to come into the office and spend a day here so you understand what we do. Sometimes when you have to make a decision on anything, you have no idea what we have to do to implement it. So I think it would be good.
Absolutely, I did that with the fire department, it was fun.
So I'm mindful of the fact, I'm, this is a good discussion, but I'm mindful of the fact that we have other agenda items that we haven't yet gotten to, and we have people waiting to get presentations. So I'd like to keep us moving along. This brings us to the new business, which we moved up, and item.
K1?
K1, which is the addition of consideration of forming a committee. I had suggested a two-member committee. And since this is the agenda item that I added, I'll add just a couple more thoughts. I'm aware that this has become very polarized, that people are concerned about the role that I played. I, I hear you, I understand the concern. I disagree in some ways, but I recognize that it might be best served if myself and anyone else who's sort of like, sort of, you know, become kind of, taken kind of a position on this, steps back and allows the township board to be represented in the discussions by people who are sort of less polarized. And so I didn't put myself forward to do that, I was suggesting that, Kathy, that you be one of the members, I haven't had a chance to talk with you about this idea, but I also think John would be an excellent participant for a variety of reasons, one of which is that he serves as our board rep to both the LPC and the planning commission. So my recommendation would be to form a two-member sort of ad hoc committee, I guess, or delegation to represent us in talking with Dexter. I think a two-member representation makes it easier for scheduling. I could understand if people had a different view of that, but that was, that's, those are my reasons for putting the two of you forward and for only making it a two-person team.
Is that okay with you?
I'm good, I'm sorry. Oh, it's okay with me. Sean Keough talked about three people. So he's planning on three people from Dexter.
Well, if we want to have, I mean, it's not like we're going to be voting, it's just you're going to be talking. But, so I don't know that we have to send three people, but if we, if the board felt strongly about sending an additional either board member or because this is so involved with land preservation, maybe sending the chair of the land preservation commission as a representative.
Let's talk about what these people would be authorized to do. Okay, before I suggest that I be on the committee. Is to represent Syo in any discussions request, discussions with Requestor Dave Lutton or the city of Dexter regarding any annexation of Syo Township. That, so that's, that's what I think we need designated to do. Any discussions with Requestor Dave Lutton or the city of Dexter regarding any annexation of Syo Township. What we have on the table is a letter to the city of Dexter for a hostile annexation of Syo Township. We have a land preservation commission, John does a great job of it. Mr. Lutton will go through that process. We have a planning commission process. Jan Culbertson does a great job of chairing that, Mr. Lutton will go through that process. I, I think it would be inappropriate to create, say, a committee for one proposed project in Syo Township out of many. I think what is appropriate in the gap we have is this extraordinary thing where is annexation, comes up once in a blue moon. And so that's why I would suggest that the scope be in to authorize whomever to represent Syo Township in any discussions with Requestor Dave Lutton or the city of Dexter regarding any annexation of Syo Township. Because the other issues, while they're overlapping, you know, the LPC has its role, the PC has its role, and I don't want to inadvertently create a committee that just sort of puts this project through a different process. Does that make sense, Kathy? So I would also suggest myself, because I have been completely uninvolved. I don't know Mr. Lutton except for his presentation. And I would say that in terms of restoring some community trust, given what we've just been through, that longtime trustee Kathleen Noel and myself, who enjoys and very much appreciates the trust that I have from residents, would be good representatives. I think John would be a bonus. I also think John will be involved through the LPC and PC, but I think it could be the three of us.
Yeah, I'll be the guy without the trust of the residents.
No, 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 you have the trust, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying what, what everybody, you know, kind of brings, so.
I think John would, excuse me.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think John would be a good addition to this because of the skill that he brings to this board. I really would like to see him on there if he's willing to.
I'll do whatever, I'll stay on, I'll stay on, I'll do whatever you guys want. I also think the guy to my right would be a good, good possibility.
Well, certainly, I mean.
So I'll do.
I mean, John, this could be one discussion, or this could take two years, we don't know.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with whomever this board sets, knowing that there's some tension on who the third one might be. I, I'm okay with what we decide.
I just want to point out, as just a back check here, that there's nothing in this letter that we received today that was sent by Mr. Lutton to Dexter that says anything about a hostile annexation. In fact, it could be a 425 agreement, as far as I can read.
Will, I don't think you're understanding that letter the same way.
Well, I, obviously, you're understanding it differently because you're reading all sorts of hostility into it.
No, no, no.
Those are John's words in the LPC meeting, so.
Well, that's the term that was used there, I think, you know, you can call it a straight annexation, you can call it a hostile.
Or a state boundary commission.
Or annexation.
We just call it an annexation.
Just call it an annexation.
Let's just call it an annexation. This is why, in part, I wanted to have this discussion after the presentation from Mr. Lutton, so that we could ask questions instead of just sort of speculate about what it is that he's thinking.
But I think what's important is, I don't want to, for any project, create a committee special to a project when we have an LPC and we have a PC and we have regular processes that are tried and true, and those should be respected and observed. What we don't have a process for is representation of Syo Township in any discussions with the annexation requestor or the city of Dexter regarding any annexation in Syo Township. So that's why my proposal is as narrow.
Talking about creating a standing committee to talk about annexation?
I didn't say committee, your committee was your word, mine, I'll make a motion to authorize Clerk Flintoff, Trustee Noel, and Trustee Reiser to together represent Syo Township in any discussions with Requestor David Lutton or the city of Dexter regarding any annexation of Syo Township. That's a motion.
I would support that motion if it was amended to replace Clerk Flintoff with Township Manager instead. And I would say Township Manager so that it could be either the current interim Township Manager, or if this extends for some period of time, the Township Manager who may succeed our interim Township Manager.
And I would just say the staff, the Township Manager, the Parks Director, whoever it is that's appropriate is going to be brought in. Again, this may be one meeting, this might take five years, we don't know.
I'll support Jessica's motion, but let's have discussion. I, Jessica, would you be okay with Mark Thompson being the third member?
No, not instead, in addition, sure.
Then he'd be the fourth member?
Well, certainly, I mean, but what I'm saying is, I think we need three board members, certainly. I mean, I mean, I mean, it's, it's, or we could just designate the manager alone, and that would be also fine with me. But I think that, given the workload of the manager, I don't think, not for any manager, that's too much.
And then we're going to go through this transition, because if we do end up hiring Joyce, then we're going to start the discussion all over again.
So Kathy, what is, what is?
Here's the thing, I mean, John and I are both attorneys, we both have familiarity with 425 agreements. We've worked on issues together before, we can work together, even when we disagree. I don't, I mean, I think it makes sense for us to be on this committee. I mean, Mark Thompson may be leaving in a month or two.
I agree.
Well, and then to bring in our permanent manager later on down the, I mean, but I think to start, because we're going to hold off again, we're going to, you know, it's already in front of us, let's do something.
How do others on the board feel about Jessica also working on this committee?
I'd like to just see you and John.
What is the concern about me? I've never met Mr. Lutton. I mean, is, is there, I mean?
Jessica, I'll tell you what my concern is.
Okay, there we go.
Well, you asked. I, my concern is that you have been very outspoken from the moment that this proposal came forward in your opposition to any consideration of annexation. And we're talking with the city of Dexter, we will be, as a township, talking with the city of Dexter.
Yeah, but.
And, and they have the ability to annex, and, and, you know, we need to have people participating in that conversation who are able to listen to the other side and work together with them and possibly find some common ground. And I feel that you are too polarizing of an influence on that discussion. I admire all of the work that you do for the township, but I don't think that this is an appropriate or a good fit for you, this particular task.
And, and Will, we've not talked about annexation, I think I made that point earlier. So I am open-minded about where this goes. John asked me, well, are you open-minded about arsenic? And I said, no, but short of that, no, I know. I know, I know, but you're talking about different issues. And, and I said, no, arsenic is bad. I said, but certainly, everything else I'm open-minded about.
Well, and again.
I just want to do something that's good for Syo. And so if somebody comes to me and says, you know, here's this agricultural land, let's annex several hundred acres, and, you know, it looks like Syo's going to get very little to nothing out of it, I will oppose it. If it looks like it's going to be a good deal for Syo, I will support it.
The board will get regular reports.
Right.
It might be your opportunity to vote. Would you accept it?
I could, I'm just, I'm just telling you that it would be stronger with the three of us in terms of there being trust with the community.
So, John?
I'm just being honest.
Julian, how do you feel? I want to hear it, because I can support her being on the committee. But we have two board members who are saying they're, they don't, and that causes a concern.
And they don't for good reasons, bad reasons?
You've heard them.
Yeah.
I can't comment on good or bad.
So, trustee Carrion?
I'm good with that. And, you know, Jess, I know that you're painted in certain ways as being anti-whatever. I get that too. But, but, you know, if people listen to your reasoning, and I was at that meeting, and it was the initial 243 acres or whatever it was, it was a huge chunk of Syo that was presented to be annexed into Dexter. That, as a resident at the time, that gave me heart palpitations.
Absolutely.
Also, I know that you're open to ideas, and, you know, there's a different plan. And one part of that plan, I am in huge favor of, now, if it goes through or not, you know, but of course, we have to get all the details. And as I said at the Dexter meeting last night, I am not opposed to things, and I am not for things until I am fully educated. And I feel that you're the same way. So I am, I'm good with you being on this committee, if that's something that you choose and the rest of the board.
John?
I'll live with whatever, a mix. You sometimes make things harder to accomplish because it's hard to work collaborative with you sometimes. And I'm saying that as a guy who works with you and tries to work with you sometimes. I'm just saying, you can make things tough, and I worry that you're going to, on the other hand, you, you care about Syo, its residents, its people, and you'll fight like hell for Syo, and that's good too. What I don't want you doing is coming, I don't want any of us coming in with some kind of preconceived notion of what should or shouldn't happen based on something, like, we got to go in open on this. I also worry that if you're not on it, then you won't have crafted anything, and there you, you might be less likely to buy in when it comes to a vote in front of us. So I frankly worry about that a little bit too.
Well, I think what, I mean, I don't have any preconceived ideas other than I don't want a couple of men behind closed doors selling out Syo, behind the scenes. Now, I don't have any preconceived notions about this. I'm talking about, and this is why I wanted to talk about process, John, before we hear from Dave Lutton, okay? Because this is our mess that we created.
I don't know if it's a mess. I don't think we have a mess on our hands. We have a proposal we're going to hear and react to.
And we're going to react to it. But, but John, also, I will say, you know, I, I think that, you know, you have come in as an appointee, you're doing a great job. But, you know, we also need to make sure that we're being critical, asking the right questions, and not, you know, falling into giving a little bit of something to everybody. And I think that, you know, we do work well together. I'm just interested in hearing what Dexter's position is on this, because I don't know.
First of all, Jessica, you came in as an appointee as well, so.
And then she was elected.
And then I got the most votes ever.
So, so fine, but, you know, I don't think it's, you know, it's kind of gratuitous swipe to sort of make that.
No, no, not, no, no, not at all, I'm just, I'm, no.
Of all the things she's done to me, that's the least of it.
Oh, John, John, I've never done anything so bad to you. Come on.
So.
Come on, John, but John, this whole like, oh, he said, she said, pretend thing about what's going on here.
I'll live.
Come on.
I was only kidding.
Yeah, don't.
I, if, if we need a third person on there, I would, I would rather, and want it to be someone from the board, I think it should be someone who's more neutral on this topic. I think, Jessica, I hear in what you're saying, somebody who is already taken a very firm position.
On what?
On this question of annexation.
What do you think my position is?
You are opposed to it, you have said so.
She was opposed to that July 26, 240.
She has said, Jessica has said things through, throughout this meeting. And in her characterization of the letter as a hostile letter.
Bye, Larry.
I, my, my sense is that you have taken a position, I don't sense. I, I, my, my sense is that you have taken a position. I don't sense in the way that you are approaching this, someone who is open-minded. You are characterizing the people who've been involved in the discussion so far as having some kind of sort of sinister.
I didn't say sinister.
You are, you are, you are, you are referring to the process that has occurred so far as if somehow it's a mess, as if there's something wrong with it. And, and I disagree with that. And I'm willing to step back from this because people have those strong feelings. But I think you should also be willing to step back from this because I think you are too polarizing in this situation. I would suggest that if we need a third person from the board, that we put Donna on the team. Donna is one of, Donna is, Donna is one of the officers. Donna is one of the officers, so she would have that same sort of connection to the day-to-day operations of the township. She has a lot of connections to this corner of the township, probably more so than anyone else serving on the board. I think that if we need three board members to be on the team, that it would be a, a, a strong team with Kathy, John, and Donna.
Call the question.
Call the question. So what's, what's before the?
So the motion before, motion and support is to authorize Clerk Flintoff, Trustee Noel, and Trustee Reiser to together represent Scioum Township in any discussions with Requestor, Dave Lutton, or the City of Dexter regarding any annexation of Scioum Township.
And I'm gonna support this motion, and I'm gonna support this motion with you on it, Jessica, because.
Well, that's what the motion is.
I know that. But you told me ahead of time that you, that you're neutral on annexation, you're open-minded to it.
I am.
And anything, you'll, you'll fight hard for Scioum to the extent that's needed. Hopefully, we can work collaboratively with Dexter if this thing is to come to pass. And we have a hell of a lot better chance of getting it passed by the board. If you're part of the, the resolution, then not. So I'm gonna vote for this, and I urge the rest of you to unanimously support her so we can move on and hear from our guests.
And you're also, since you're talking so much about me, and I also know that you will promise not to just try to make it all nice for everybody and do what's right.
Well, I'll make it bad for you. Don't worry.
All right, so given Trustee Reiser's, given Trustee Reiser's comment and the comments of other members of the board, why don't we proceed to calling a roll on the question?
Oh, I second it.
You did. You supported it. So it was moved by Flintoff, support by Noel. Please call a roll. No.
Palmer?
Yes, because we got to move on. We spent half an hour appointing a committee, crying out loud.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
And then we will move on to the other item that was moved to new business, which is G6. Just the possible action on the KBK snow removal authorization. And Trustee Karing, you asked to pull this from the consent agenda, so perhaps you should start with your question or concern.
Well, okay, if you look at March, we did, did we pay a February bill? Was that the one that we spent? It was, there was one bill, I think it was for January, that was over $7,000. And here we have another one in March for $8,000. And you know, I know, I hear people complain about the amount of salt that is laid down and it, or spread. And here, like, there's the March 17th, March 18th, March 19th, $350 a pop. And I'm kind of thinking that they're just coming around and, you know, Scioum's easy to get money from. I don't know, but I just hear, hear a lot of complaints. So I would suggest that, I mean, of course, we're, we need to pay the bill. But to go out for bids.
I responded to that, and I share your concerns, and were we not in the middle of the winter, we would have gone out with this.
Right.
So, had some of the same discussion internally in the building here about the cost and the frequency. So we will shop that around next time.
And did we approve the contract through the end of the winter? Was it? We, do you remember?
Yeah, I think through June.
Yes. I don't, it was, they got us through the winter. We have a contract with this company to do work. Summer landscaping kind of work, and this work in the winter. Two separate.
Well, it was a couple Saturdays ago, when I was driving out Jackson, I saw somebody on a mower with a leaf blower blowing the trash into Jackson Road.
I, I go, that may have been them. I would hope not.
Yeah, so this is, and if they lay down salt in June, we're firing them.
And a friendly amendment to the, to the motto motion, if I could make a, a, a amendment, actually, I'll make the motion if that's okay?
Sure.
Make the motion to authorize an additional $8,000 for the KBK snow removal contract payable from 101-263-823.
Oh, I didn't put the fund in today. All right, so we have a motion by Flintoff. Is there a support?
I'll support.
Support by Noel. This is funds expenditure, so there will need to be a roll call. Is there any further comment before we call the roll? Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reiser? Motion passes.
This brings us to public hearings and presentations. And our first presentation this evening, discussion only, is on wastewater facilities oversight by the State of Michigan. So please, our guests from Eagle, please come forward and.
While they're getting set up, could we take a five-minute break?
Oh, that's a good idea. Is that all right? Can we take a five-minute break?
I don't have the Zoom link, so if you could send that to me. Carrie, you're in.
So we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll, a recess, and then we'll come back.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie, how are you?
Good.
And anyway, I'm.
Brian, how are you?
Thank you.
Or are you gonna do it standing up?
Thank you.
Okay, alright, so we're now coming back into order. Bringing the meeting back to order and would you please? Well, actually, I wanted to turn to you Kathy to introduce this particular item if you would.
Okay, well, I've had discussions with Mike and Cotton from Eagle. She is an engineer there regarding the Heritage Woods onsite sewer permitting process. So she's going to talk about permitting construction of these plants and she's going to give us general information. We all have questions about this. And then Rachel Burns, who we just just met tonight, will deal with compliance issues. But you guys introduce yourselves too.
Yeah, so I'm Mike and Cotton. I'm a Part 41 engineer for the state and work out of our Jackson District Office. I cover the southeastern five counties of Michigan. We're gonna go over what the Part 41 program is, so if you're unfamiliar, don't worry. I do before we start wanna like clear some things up real quick. We're with the Water Resources Division, so unfortunately, we don't do anything with Delman and we don't do anything with drinking water. So if you have questions about those, we can provide you a contact, but we're not the right people for that one before we get started. So I'll let Rachel introduce herself.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm Rachel Burns. I'm also out of the Jackson District Office. I actually am the Program Specialist for the Part 22 Groundwater Discharge Program, which is what the groundwater discharge permit that has been issued for Heritage Woods. That's the permitting program it's under. So I will not actually be the compliance person for this site, but I work with all the compliance staff in that program statewide. It's like technical problem.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. Okay, we have to talk nicely.
I have fish to enter.
Okay. So, sorry about that. So just to give some real basic overview. So our wastewater regulations for Water Resources Division, they come from Act 451, also often known as the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act or NARA, which is what most people know it as. The Part 22 rule, I should say first, the Part 31 is the Natural Resource Protection Law, which is where all of our water rules come from. So Mike and's Part 41 Regulations, my Part 22 Groundwater Quality Rules, and then the Part 21 Administrative Rules, which is what gives us the authority to issue permits. And then just to let everyone know to sometimes get this question, we are going to be talking about Waters of the State. Often people think of Waters of the State in the visualized surface water, lakes, rivers, streams, you know, the kind of real visible ones. But I also just wanna add in there that our definition under Part 31 for Waters of the State also includes groundwaters. So anytime you discharge anything to the ground surface that is connected in one way or another to an aquifer, which is connected to our groundwaters of the state.
Okay, so first, we're gonna go over our National Flute and Discharge Elimination System, which we abbreviate as NPDS. That includes a few different areas. We do industrial and commercial facilities. That's things like non-contactable cooling water, swimming pools, mobile home parks. We have a construction stormwater program, an industrial stormwater program, a concentrated animal feeding operation program, and then the publicly owned treatment works, which is what most wastewater treatment plants fall into. Our NPDS municipal wastewater permits fall into two categories. We have major permits and minor permits. Our major permits are for facilities that have a flow greater than 1 million gallons per day and serve a population greater than 10,000. They have a few additional monitoring requirements. They have some toxics requirements. And then we have a minor's permit, which is for flow less than 1 MGD and for populations below 10,000 gallons per day. They don't have additional monitoring requirements. And that distinction is important because it does change how we do our inspections and what our obligations are to EPA, how many inspections we do at that facility. So for our minor facilities, which would be things like the small onsite wastewater treatment plants, we require monitoring requirements for CDOD, which is biological oxygen demand, total suspended solids, ammonia, total phosphorus, fecal calform. Total phosphorus is on there twice. PH and dissolved oxygen. There are occasions where some permits, depending on the receiving water, might have more requirements, but they'll never have less than this. Every permit that we issue for these facilities is individual and they're based on the facility and its capabilities and the receiving water.
And then to talk a little bit about the groundwater discharge permits, unfortunately, our program is not quite as clean cut as NPDS in their majors and minors and their permit categories. So the Part 22 rules actually have multiple, I think it's upwards of 24 categories of permits or exemptions. Yes, we've got quite a few. So you will hear me saying things like 2218, 2211 sometimes. Just to give everyone an overview, these are just some of the permit types that are listed here. It is the full gamut, everything gravel washing facilities, portable power washers, folks who wash fruit and vegetables, commercial animal care, up to the larger public segment works, sanitary sewage system. So it's the it's the whole range of things that we have under the groundwater discharge permit program. And I should just mention real briefly as well, Mike had mentioned that the NPDS program is federal. The groundwater program is a state program. So there is no federal groundwater protection program. State of Michigan, we have Part 22, which is a state program. I won't read through all of this for you, but just something that I want to touch base on is that groundwater program will sometimes here refer to something called 2204. It's one of the first rules in our Part 22 rules. And what it says is the things that are required for a discharge. So these are pretty, sometimes we call them common sense things, but pretty, pretty basic requirements, things like isolation distances from wellheads to make sure that we're protecting drinking water, making sure that we're protecting surface water, so the Part 4 Quality Rules, making sure we're not creating a 201 site of environmental contamination. Things, basic things like the discharge shall not be injurious, shall not cause erosion. You can't discharge to your neighbor's property. So that's where often you'll just kinda hear us refer to 2204 requirements. That's usually what we're referring to. This I just threw in here, so the permit for Heritage Woods. The permit for Heritage Woods is a 2218. So I just threw this in here to show the required well isolation distances for 2218. So when we are issuing a permit, we are talking about the location approved for discharge. In this case, a couple of rapid infiltration basins. We'll talk more about what those are. So this is the isolation distance, the setback distance required between where those rapid infiltration basins are located and where the nearest wells are located. So this this permit has been issued. So once a permit is issued to a facility, we have a regular compliance process. So this is what I was talking about a little bit earlier. I'm not the compliance person for this site. We have compliance staff that are located throughout the throughout the state though, so in just different districts. I actually have the business cards for the gentleman who's the compliance person for this facility here with me. Can also get his contact information from our website. This is where anyone who's looking for contact information throughout the state can go to. And we can get, I can get everyone links to this. If you're looking for the groundwater discharge website at all, just to find, so that's what, this is a screenshot of it. If you go onto your favorite search engine and just type in state of Michigan and groundwater, it'll pull this website up.
So ours is B, a guy named B or gal named B Benson?
Brent Benson, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so he's out of the Jackson District with us.
And you had said you're gonna make the PowerPoint available to us later.
Yeah, yep.
So we'll have this, we'll have the PowerPoint.
So just some things to to kinda go through the basics of what comes in for compliance. So course, compliance with a permit can can be a wide range of things. So we're gonna go over the generalities here. And then if folks have particular questions or of course, once a facility is operating, sometimes more complex compliance questions come up then that we're always happy to discuss as well. But some things that facilities can can all expect are as part of our normal process. So all groundwater facilities will have regular inspections. Because this is a 2218, it's one of our largest permit categories, it's gonna have the most frequent number of inspections. So there are gonna be at least three in a five-year period. Sometimes there's gonna be sampling involved with that inspection as well. The inspection frequencies do vary. So again, this one is a larger permit category, gonna have more inspections. Some of our smaller permit categories are not going to see nearly as many inspections. If it's a low level concern on the discharge, then it's gonna have a smaller number of inspections. Some inspections differ too. It depends what our staff are out there doing. If it's a regularly scheduled inspection, it's gonna be what's called a comprehensive inspection, where we're going to look at everything associated with the discharge. If we're out there for a complaint, it might be a recon inspection where we're looking at something in particular. Sorry, so I just kinda went through this. So our three primary types of inspections, the recon inspection, lowest level, just kinda looking at one item in particular, usually for a complaint. Compliance evaluation inspection, that's the full comprehensive inspection. And then a compliance sampling inspection, that's where we are actually doing sampling at the same time as the inspection is occurring.
And if I could just hop in real quick, I must have deleted this slide, but our surface water discharge program has the same three types of inspections that are required. Our major permit categories, I believe, are three every five years. Three of the CSI or CEI, that's what we dictate them as. The CSI is a sampling inspection, as Rachel said. And then the CEI is just an evaluation where we go through everything onsite with them.
And then for items that the permitees are submitting to us on a regular basis basis once they are permitted, so they will be submitting discharge monitoring reports. In this case, I said maybe monthly or annually, that depends on the permits. In this case, these would be annual reports with some parameters required to be reported daily for their frequency, but it would come to us once a month. So it does include the influent, effluent, and monitoring wells. This says, if applicable, monitoring wells will be required at this facility. Sampling and analysis plan is required, so that's where the facility is reporting to us how they're gonna be conducting their analysis to be in compliance with their permit. Discharge management plan, that's how the facility explains to us how they're going to be discharging to the rapid infiltration basins to meet their permit requirements and make sure that they're not having issues with those 2204 requirements to make sure that discharge is not injurious. And then operation and maintenance manual for the facility describing what their maintenance process is, what their upkeep is, what their regular operations are, what they need to do to keep the system functioning appropriately. And there was a request to just kind of go through some of the common violations that we see. And this is kind of just kinda lumping all permits together. Here are the most common ones. So one of the most common issues that we do run into with facilities unfortunately is what we call discharging without permit authorization. So either because their permit has expired and they have not taken the appropriate steps to get their permit reissued. Usually it's because they've been too late to reapply. They haven't responded to requests from our permit writers for additional information to reissue the permit. Or occasionally, except it's not the situation in this case, sometimes, of course, we find discharges that are happening without a permit. So it's we've become aware of it because of a complaint or something like that and we need to address it with the facilities. The facility not having a properly certified operator is another one that we do run into sometimes. Most often, it's because the certified operator that they had, that they informed us of, has left and they have failed to inform us that they've hired someone new or or, you know, trained up someone who's passed the certifications exams and is able to operate the system. Our permits do require that facilities report non-compliance to us. Some are better at it than others, so that is sometimes unfortunately kind of violation where we are needing to tell the facilities that they got another violation because they failed to notify us of the violation in timely fashion and when it occurred. And then the other most common is just that a facility has failed to submit something to us in a timely manner. Those, the plans that I mentioned, like the discharge management plans, operation maintenance manuals, sampling analysis plans, those need to be redone on a regular basis. Facilities are not always the best at remembering to get those to us on their due day or by today.
Generally speaking, are most of the violations found and not self-reported, I would guess? Or what would you say is kind of the way that you find out about violations?
So violations that are due to exceedances of their effluents, so something that where it's tied to their sampling, and those are almost always self-reported to us. Items that we're finding tend to be like paperwork items that aren't being reported in a timely fashion, operation and maintenance issues where we show up at the facility to do an inspection and something is not being properly maintained. So it kinda, it depends on the type of violation that it is.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so going on to Part 41 permit. As we said, Part 41 falls under Part 31 of NARA. We are responsible, Water Resources Division, for processing wastewater construction permits. We do this by reviewing them based on Part 41, the act itself. And also, we review based on 10 state standards, which is, was published by the Upper Mississippi and Great Lakes Board for sewage construction. Also, in those 10 states, all kind of reviewed to the same standards. Those include requirements for things like redundancy, to make sure that they can pass the amount of flow that they're specifying. Flow estimation, we estimate for most facilities that you'll receive about 100 gallons of sewage per person per day. We use that as our basis of design. I, as an engineer for the office, review all of the bases of design for all of the facilities that come in in our district. And then we make kind of a permit decision from there. So I think one of the things that we are, you guys were most concerned about was the non-governmental ownership status of this facility. So I did share a policy with Kathy. It's WRD 010, and that kinda outlines the responsibilities of both parties. So it has the three main requirements. And it said the owner of the sewage system must transfer ownership to a legal entity and that entity must be recognized by Laura. The owner, prior to issuance of a Part 41 permit, which is the construction permit, must establish a perpetual funding mechanism. So in doing that, they're required to, before they can even obtain a permit from us, they're required to have two years of operation and maintenance costs in an escrow account specifically for the facility. And that is supposed to escalate to up to five years of operation and maintenance costs. They're also required as part of that to establish a way of billing for their system. So they have to establish how members of that community will be paying for their sewage treatment. And the owner shall establish a record covenant running with the land. So that means if that land is sold or transferred, the responsibility of the onsite treatment system must be sold with the land. So those are the three main requirements of that cost.
And I was just gonna add in real quick, something that we may have forgotten to mention that I know we sometimes get questions on is why would we issue? So a groundwater discharge permit has already been issued for the site, which is more of the equivalent of an operation and maintenance permit. Why would we issue that before a construction permit? And the reason for that is because before they can construct and build the facility and Mike can review their plans and make sure it meets the requirements is they need to know what discharge criteria they need to meet. They need to know what they have to treat their nitrogen to, what they need to treat their phosphorus to, any others, because it's sanitary sewage, we don't worry too much about like heavy metals or those types of things, but any other parameters of concern, we have to tell them what are gonna be safe discharge numbers for them first, which is what comes through the groundwater discharge permit in this case. And then Mike and for her Part 41 review for the engineering can then confirm and make sure that the design that they're proposing is gonna be able to meet that.
Yep, so I get the requirements from permit section and then I make sure their design can meet the requirements that permit sets. So to go over just general wastewater treatment plants, this is kind of the general order of operation for almost all wastewater treatment plants in the state. So first, they go through screening, that's to remove rags, the occasional root ball that might come through the system. Hopefully, you're not getting root balls because you're maintaining your system, but it happens.
Or just random things that people manage to flush and you can't see.
You would be surprised at the things that people are managing to get extra access to the sewer system. So that's to remove kind of those big things. That also often comes with grit removal, so grit removals, things like sediment, grit that we eat that unfortunately passes through us and into the system. And then it goes on to clarification. Clarification is where it kind of sits still and then settle out. That often also comes with a skimmer, so it skims off fat oils and grease. And then it moves on to really like the beefy part of wastewater treatment, which is activated sludge. That's where small microorganisms take all of the things that are in our waste. They eat it and then they get rid of what they've ate and they release biota and that kind of settles out at the end.
You talk about poop a lot, so if anyone's being squeamish, just like raise a hand or something to let us know.
Yeah, we do. It's it's great that things manage to clean our food by poop. But that is kind of how it works. That our little microorganisms kind of eat everything up. And they leave behind things like phosphorus and nitrogen. And those are things that are in our permit limits. And those can be removed based on the different bacteria that are active in the system. So they often go through an aerobic process and then an anaerobic process. So that's with and without oxygen, and that kind of activates the different bacteria in the system. So once it's gone through, the activated sludge process, it'll go on to secondary clarification. And that settles out all of the poop from the bugs. And it kind of, by the time you get to secondary clarification, most of the time, the water is very clear. Normally does not have a smell unless something's wrong with the system. Then occasionally, there might be a little bit of a smell after secondary clarification. But most of the time, at the facilities I have been to, once you get to secondary clarification, things look pretty good. Occasionally, there's tertiary tertiary treatment. That's normally for facilities that have extra low phosphorus limits. So depending on, in the surface water program, I don't know how the groundwater program sets it up. But in the surface water program, we have specific water bodies that have extra low phosphorus limits. So the Huron, for example, has a really low phosphorus limit. And that's just kind of because it's a water concern and we've noticed that that needs to be set for that water body. So occasionally, we'll have tertiary treatment to help knock out any extra phosphorus. And then for most facilities, groundwater facilities don't require disinfection because it propels through the ground. But for any surface water discharge, you require disinfection. That's normally through UV or chlorination and dechlorination. If they chlorinate, they have to dechlorinate and they'll have a chlorine limit in their permit.
Yes, so a question, with the Heritage Woods proposal, it's going to go into the ground. And does it just keep going down?
We're gonna get there.
Okay, we've got some pictures to help.
Yeah. So specifically to the Heritage Woods system, it's a sequencing batch reactor. So that means, instead of everything going through all at once and continuously treating, it's going in, treating, coming out, and all day long, it's going to have that process. They'll have an equalization basin, kind of hold things until they're treated. But in sequencing sequencing batch reactors, all of the big red box is handled in one tank. So unlike your standard treatment system, which can take up a pretty big footprint, the system's going to treat in one tank, which is pretty common. We see it mostly in smaller systems. Larger systems can't do the batch process, but it treats in the same way. And then we get an effluent that meets the same requirements that all the rest of our plants do.
So these are just a couple of pictures to to help folks visualize. So this is probably significantly larger SBR than heritage woods is going to have, but this just kind of helps to show, so it's not unusual, especially with a system that needs to part have, needs to meet Part 41 criteria for them to have at least two tanks, because they need to have one functioning at all times, one as a backup, or just be able to switch between the two.
Yes, they have to be able to treat 75% of their flow without changing their cycle times. So a cycle time is how long it sits in that treatment tank. So they have to be able to treat three quarters of their their daily flow without changing those cycle times at all times. I believe Heritage Woods has two tanks. Each tank can pass just a little over 75% without changing cycle times.
So just to kind of give a visual, and this is one where we've got one tank that's going through the aeration process, so you can see the bubbles in there, and one that's an arresting process. And this is just kind of a reiteration of what Mike and was talking about before, just kind of showing, so if it's all that one single tank, you've got the fill stage where the the raw influent is coming in, so that untreated wastewater is going through its aeration or reaction stage, then it's going through a settling stage, so that's the anaerobic portion, and then going through the settling and decant, which is kind of that secondary clarifier portion that Mike was talking about. And then there is also what's called a wasting tank. So that's where the solid sludges that are left at the bottom go to, and they're generally going out for land application under the bio solids program. And then the liquid portion is decanted, either out to discharge or a little bit sometimes fed back to the head, just because it has that bacteria in there, so it can kind of restart the process for the next batch coming through.
Is this similar to the Anira wastewater system? Like I've done a tour over there.
So the Anira system's huge.
I mean, it's big, but I'm saying.
It's very big. That would be the standard, what we see as a normal activated sludge plant. So they have multiple tanks for each process. They're doing continuous flow all day long. In the system, everything's in one tank. And it kind of just goes through, stops, goes through, stops, sort of deal. So kind of like the Anira treatment plant, but much smaller. There aren't those big, I'm sure when you went out, there are the big round tanks with the arm that kind of spins. That's the clarifier. The system wouldn't have that, but very similar in the performance.
Concept, yes.
Just the mini version.
Yep.
And excuse me, you said that all of this is gonna be underground?
No, so this is actually, so it's gonna be in. No, no, this is actually, uh, so it's gonna be in tanks that are going to look probably, see, can't go backwards. Probably not exactly like this, but generally they're going to be in tanks that will look something, something like this, they're above ground. Or at least partially, sometimes they'll be a little bit buried in ground at the bottom. Um, I don't know for this one if it's gonna be covered or not.
Uh, I don't recall if it's covered, most of the time.
Webster Township is like twenty-five feet tall. It's got a grinder.
I was not aware of the, of that one, um, I didn't permit that one.
It's a residential, um, subdivision.
They can be pretty tall, depending on if they're on a platform, if they're partially submerged. Um, I kind of just depends.
Yeah, ten, ten to twelve foot, twelve walls is about the max I've seen for, for one onsite. And then these are just a couple of photos, sorry, you can tell these are not, I tried not to use ones from our actual sites just for this presentation material, um, so you can tell these are from different states. Uh, but these are just a couple images to help show rapid infiltration basins. So here say ribs, we're not talking about what's, what's in your stomach, we're, we're talking about the rapid infiltration basins. And they can be managed in a couple of different ways, so they can be like the ones on the left where it's more of a, an open soil. Um, the, they can also have a little bit more vegetation, um, when they are being filled, so the image on the, on the right is showing when it's being filled. And the image on the left is what we expect it to look like after, hopefully a couple of hours, at most a day, it should have fully infiltrated like that. That allows the soil that's in there to get the oxygen back into it, so it's aerobic and not anaerobic. Sometimes these will have some vegetation growing in them, uh, so that, and that's, that's perfectly fine if it's, you know, grass kept short. We just don't want to see woody vegetation in and we don't want to see trees, shrubs, anything like that, needs to be. Uh, maintained annual vegetation that's growing in there. And this is actually where groundwater program can differ slightly from M P E S. Cause this is actually where what we would kind of call tertiary treatment comes in. So we actually look at what's happening within these rapid infiltration basins. Um, and sometimes there can be some nutrient credit given if there's growing vegetation and that vegetation is taking up the nutrients, particularly nitrogen and phosphorus. And particularly if that is harvested off, so mowed, collected in some way. And actually taken to a different location for disposal because those nutrients are removed from that system. There's also some credit given in certain situations to the phosphorus absorption that's going to happen in the soil itself. So phosphorus will naturally absorb to soil particles to a certain extent, so all soil has a, a certain ability to absorb a certain amount of phosphorus. So that kind of is, just that natural process is actually treating it, um, kind of as a tertiary kind of final filter process to it. And so this is a visual just to help a little bit with that question of what's happening when it discharges. Um, so, and this is showing, uh, just a couple of different scenarios that, that happen fairly often in the state of Michigan, of course, our geology is fun here. Thanks to the, uh, to the glaciers, um, so sometimes if it's more, more in the situation of the top one. Where there's no confining layer, so nothing that's really slowing down the water, then it can have pretty direct contact to the groundwater that's down below. So usually you're gonna see this little bit of mounding that occurs under the basin. The soil scientists that help with our permits when they're written, they look at that soil structure, they look to see what that most confining layer is in the soils underneath. To determine how much water that area can take and how much it's going to mound to ensure that as it soaks in and it drops down into that water table. That it's gonna be able to settle out and then that soil is gonna be able to get that oxygen back in it. So that when the next load of water comes to that rapid infiltration basin, it will again be able to absorb it and transfer it down to that, to that aquifer. Um, the bottom image shows if there were a, uh, one of those layers that's really slowing the, the movement of water, they're called aquitards. Then you can actually get a perch, yeah, you can get a, a perched groundwater aquifer up there. Um, the one thing that this image doesn't show that kind of comes into play for the Heritage Woods permit. Is that we also look at the nearest to surface water. So we're kind of looking at this, these images as though this is just kind of perfectly isolated in space. But in reality, all groundwater is connected. It can do some weird things, it can move in some weird ways, but ultimately all groundwater is connected and it ultimately all connects to surface water. Groundwater follows the law of gravity, so it's trying to follow the shortest, easiest path to get out to where it wants to be. So all of this water is going to do what we call venting and that means that it's going to flow, it's gonna hit groundwater table at some point. And all that water is following gravity and it's moving to a low spot, which is usually gonna be a body of water, like a river stream, lake, something like that. And it's going to venture, it's gonna come out the side, so sometimes if you've been, if you've been like in a stream or something like that. And seeing those areas where the water is kind of, kind of bubbling up through the soil, that's usually groundwater infiltrating and coming in. We can't always see it, but that water is always kind of coming into our water bodies and moving that way. So we look at that for these permits to make sure that that water that's venting, that's coming from this discharge, moving through that groundwater. And coming out into surface water is not gonna have negative impacts on that surface water. So in this case, there is a, a low phosphorus number for this facility because it's in that Huron River watershed. Which has a total maximum daily load or timbre for phosphorus. So this facility has a very low, uh, zero point three parts per million phosphorus discharge number.
Yeah, do you require the soil boardings to evaluate the capacity?
Okay, they have to do a full hydro geo study in order to discharge to the ground.
So they have, there are monitoring wells installed to see, and actually for this facility, we're having them do some pre-discharge monitoring. Of the groundwater, so they'll have monitoring wells in place and start looking at what those groundwater levels. Look like, looking at the nutrients and the other parameter content to them before they start discharging.
Some of the, um, the water that's infiltrating, what if there's a, a big storm, how does that, how do, how do, you know, storms affect this type of?
Yeah, no, we, we take that into account, so our soil scientists, so the, the groundwater table is naturally gonna move throughout the year. So during this kind of time of year, the spring, usually that groundwater table is naturally gonna be higher, it's called the seasonal high water table. Our soil scientists are looking at where that is because that's ultimately what they're, what they're designing and planning for, kind of worst case scenario for where that groundwater is going to be when it's highest. And then we, we also know, of course, like August, July, it's gonna be lower, it's gonna naturally drop sometimes upwards of a foot. There can be that much difference in the water table for where it's moving in the soils. Um, but our soil scientists are looking at where that seasonal high water table is. And then they're also looking at, so we, we kind of, sorry, I know the folks online won't be able to see this, but. We're looking at how much water falls within this infiltration basin itself. Usually the water that's falling over here, it's gonna have enough area where it can kind of soak in. But the water that's also falling within this infiltration basin itself from the sky is gonna also soak in, so we're taking that into account. For what a normal rain, like heavy rainfall event, twenty-five year, twenty-four hour flood event is gonna look like. Um, so I just put this in here too to talk about, uh, some of the most common violations that we'll see with these types of systems. Um, so with the S B Rs, so these are, and I always let people know, my best comparison is an aquarium. If you're setting up an aquarium, it usually takes a little bit of time for it to stabilize. For all the, all the microbes to kind of do their thing, the water quality to, to kind of improve so that you don't put fish in there and have them drop dead. S B Rs do take a little bit of time as well because you're trying to get that active microbial system up and running. Often we'll see that they're seeded with microbes from another functioning wastewater treatment plant to help. But sometimes as they're coming online, we'll see some exceedances usually of the, the nitrogen and phosphorus are the most common. As they're trying to get that system kind of up and running and stabilized.
I would say that's pretty common with a lot of our wastewater treatment systems because. We use the microorganisms to treat the wastewater that comes through and they have to have a start somewhere. A lot of the time they use a seed microorganism from, from their plant, as Rachel said, um. Sometimes depending on how quickly their flow comes in, um, they'll take. Their wastewater from their equalization basin and they'll use that as their seed. Um, so it kind of just depends, I would say that's pretty common with a lot of our systems.
Um, and kind of along that line too, um, one of the other issues that we'll sometimes see is we'll see issues in the winter. Um, either with pipes freezing, in which case usually facilities figured it out in the first winter and need to get some remedial actions taken, like get those pipes insulated. Get heat tape on them, um, occasionally we'll see too, because we are usually relying on bacteria. Bacteria are kind of like us, when they get really cold, they slow down and they don't want to do quite as much, so in the winter sometimes we'll naturally see bacteria slow down a little bit too. Sometimes that means facilities need to add in something like an alum line or something like that to help with settling. And removal of the phosphorus, um, or other nutrients from the treatment process. Um, and then the last one I kind of touched on is operation and maintenance of those rapid infiltration basins. So when I go out to do the inspections, I don't want to see trees drawing in them, I don't want to see shrubs growing in them. Because those rooms are gonna be short circuiting systems to allow that water through easier. Um, I'm also gonna be looking at the vegetation, if they're trimming it, um, removing it, how they're doing that. I don't want to see that they're taking all of their grass clippings, dropping them right in the center of the rib. Everyone's probably experienced where you kind of drop a, a massive grass clipping someplace and they kind of get slimy and icky and. It just creates a mess, we don't want to see that in the ribs, we want to see that they're well distributed or just being removed somewhere else. That way they don't actually cause problems if they get piled up too much in that rapid infiltration basin, they can stop that water from percolating down into the soil.
You know, like a nursing home, but, um, reading about these and I've had a lot of interest, I may sound funny for twenty-five years and. These treatment centers, you know, people are, uh, like nursing, you know, I have. Was a nurse, uh, actually my family owns a nursing home area out in Jackson. However, you know, a lot of, um, stuff gets flushed.
Yes.
In a nursing home type facility. That you wouldn't want flushed into system, even into the city system. And they actually can make balled up, you know, even with these grinders. Uh, so is that a, something that you're able to evaluate and, and catch before? You know, also for the residents that are living there, they're, they need to be able to have sewer, you know, I'm not just talking about. The pollution of it, but the function of it.
Yep, um, so proper operation of their collection system is very important with that, that's common with all of our collection systems. Everyone has issues with flushable wipes, they're not flushable, please do not flush your wipes. Um, they cause issues all over the place, um, and I know that with places like nursing homes, long-term care facilities. Um, sometimes. Sanitary napkins, diapers, rags from cleaning, get flushed off the toilet, um. That's honestly where the operation maintenance comes in and is very key for the facility. But also at the wastewater treatment plant, they do have that screening facility that is designed to pull those hard pieces out. Since this is gonna be a pretty small collection system, um, unlike the city of Ann Arbor, for example, where they have miles and miles of pipes underground. This is gonna be a really small system for them to kind of maintain and keep track of. Um, I'm not aware, I haven't reviewed their collection system yet, so I'm not sure if they're proposing grinder pumps at every home. Um, I do believe it's a gravity system, which means it's flowing on gravity rather than. Uh, most of the time when we have a grinder pump, they're pumped into these very, very small pipes, um.
So.
Up to like two.
If you don't have a blender thing and we're having these, cause you know, half, hoppers are what they call in a hospital. And then they, even a whole bedpan's going in them, unfortunately. I'm just saying, um, it sounds like they have to have that blender.
Well, there's, they, they can also have a screen at the beginning, so that image that I was showing where the tank is filling. That's what we call influent that's coming in, in this case they're actually gonna equalization tank before that, so that's probably where their. Uh, filter is going to be, they'll have these influent filters or screens, sometimes they're called bar screens, there are lots of different versions.
They're gonna have a bar rack, I believe, the, the spacing on those is about a half inch. Ish, that's why they trap any hard material and that's their plan, um, which is common in a lot of facilities is to hand rake that daily. Um, so we see that sometimes, we see drums, um, and those kind of spin the water out of them and that removes the solids, um. Depends on the system.
Kind of like putting it through a sieve and the, the solids will usually kind of slop, they're designed with a slope, so they'll kind of slop off into some sort of sto- storage structure. Or someone will have to come through and, and rake it to push it down into like a dumpster or something like that.
And then those are held up to a, a landfill most of the time. So I'm like a personal.
Paula, Paula, before you start asking another question, can we, um, I'm, I'm mindful of our agenda and I'd like to keep moving along with the presentation.
So then, then talking about the, the compliance actions portion of it. Um, so generally what happens if we find a violation during an inspection, we'll inform the facility of, of what the issue is during the inspection, what actions will we take? And then we formally document it either in a compliance communication or a violation notice, and it depends on the severity of the issues. From there, so we can do, if a facility is not responding to the compliance actions that we told them they need to take and not coming back in the compliance with their permit. We may do additional violation notices or second violation notices. Um, so additional violation notices are generally if we find new violations that they need to take care of. Second violation notices are if they have failed to address a violation that we've already informed them of, so it's kind of like this is your second and last notice to get this taken care of. If they're failing to respond to us, then we generally go to enforcement step where we, it's referred over to our enforcement unit. And that's usually where we'll take more significant actions, like an administrative consent order. Um, or if it's something very serious where we think criminal action is occurring, then we'll pursue it as a criminal issue. Um, and then this information, information on our permits that are issued, um, on compliance actions, on inspections, everything that we do for these facilities. Uh, is part of the public record and it's available on our, on our website, so we use a system called My Water. My Enviro, I'm sorry, the name changed not too long ago, My Enviro, it's online, it's an online database that's accessible to the public. Um, so I, I put the link in here, uh, but I'd be happy if there's interest later, um, kind of in a tutorial on how to use and access that information. Um, I've got information I can email out as a PDF or walk people through the process, it's not too, not too complicated, there's lots of information in there though. And this is for every single site that we permit in Water Resources Division, so groundwater, surface water, wetlands. Um, and actually a couple of other, a couple of other divisions are getting added in, including your quality, so we'll make sure if you want to use it, we can show you how to get it filtered down.
Um, so we also have requirements for operators, um, so they, that's a little bright for you guys to see. Um, we have four classes of operator licenses, um, they go from A to D, uh, and those are based on population. So anything over fifty thousand is an A, all the way down to two thousand, which would be a D. Um, I believe the system has six thousand proposed resident-ish. Um, so that would be a C license, um. I'm, I'm pretty sure it's six thousand, that's.
I, it sounds high, but this is for Heritage Woods alone?
Do you think in close more?
I might be thinking close, you're right.
Cause like, where were the six thousand gallons for close?
Yes.
We're, I think we're between the twenty and six thousand.
Yes, okay, never mind, this will be a D, um, my apologies. So at minimum, the requirement is that the operator has. Uh, a GED or high school diploma equivalent and they have to have two years of experience. Um, at a wastewater treatment plant in operations. Um, they're also required to take and pass our licensing exam and then they're required to maintain that license, so that often requires. Um, continuing education credits that they have to report, um, well, I believe H W R D and Laura. Um, so we do those twice, those exams twice a year. Um, we have quite a few operators in the state that have any young people in your lives who are looking for something to do, would recommend. Um, just because we do have a little bit of a shortage in the state, um. But.
So then, and then, uh, so I'll just breeze through this portion and I know there was some interest in. What happens if the system is going through closure or, and I hate this word, cessation, um, of discharge related activities on a temporary basis. Um, there are requirements, so in this permit, uh, I think that I called it out, yeah, it's part two, section E, subsection twelve, otherwise known as page thirty. Of the permit that's been issued for this facility, um, that outlines the requirements for them if they were to stop. Their operations for more than nine months or if they were to prepare to close the system. Um, there are also the full set of rules that are required, um, for all groundwater discharge facilities, comes from our part twenty-two rules and it's rule twenty-two, twenty-six. And then we do have, uh, business cards up here for anyone who's interested, um, I have business cards for myself and for the compliance person. Uh, from, that will be covering this facility, um, so we're, we're happy to share those if anyone has follow-up questions afterwards as well.
Are there further questions from members of the board?
So this facility for Heritage, you've seen the, the plans or, okay, um. So this is, that, that facility is just, um, enough to cover that. That, um, the population that will be living there, will, would, could they expand outside of their development?
They would need a new permit.
It would, okay.
Um, because our permits are based on flow, they would need to do an improvement and it would really depend on if they had the capacity to discharge. Um, because we do set those limits based on the area that they can discharge into. Um, the groundwater can only soak up so much if they don't have room to discharge, we wouldn't allow them to expand.
Um, there are also criteria under the part twenty-two rules where we recognize one owner and one person responsible for the discharge. So if there were to be, say like they wanted to add on a different development that wanted their wastewater treated there. Um, that would cause some pretty significant difficulties under our permitting process.
So as a governing board who's reviewing projects, whether it's this one or others. What kind of things should we be doing, what questions should we be asking as part of our due diligence? What are the gauches that we need to pay attention to now that we wish we would have down the road? Any advice in that regard?
Ooh, it's kind of hard, I don't know that, I don't know what your review process entails, um, I don't know what you're reviewing for.
Or a private, I don't want to get too much into it, but maybe others do, but I don't really know too much about it either. So what questions should we ask the developer, what questions should the neighbors ask the developer, what, you know? That kind of thing.
I would say some basic questions of, is this going to be an onsite wastewater treatment system, so as as was mentioned earlier, there is. Low capacity in this area to connect to existing municipal system, so first determining, are they looking at their own wastewater treatment system onsite? If so, what kind of system are they looking at? Um you know, even the basics of, are they looking at something like an SPR, are they looking at something like?
So are some better than others, do they try to do it on the cheap, that we want, oh no, we want the. The model eight thousand because it's better, or I mean, how how the hell do I know? Anything about these things?
It depends the area that you have, so certain, so. Systems that are designed properly for the type of wastewater that they're getting, so if they're doing their proper planning beforehand, they're looking at their wastewater strength, they're looking at their volume of wastewater. If they have any significant variations in how much wastewater is coming to them, if they've designed appropriately for that, there are usually multiple systems that can treat that appropriately. But then they also need to be looking at the location where they're going to be putting the wastewater treatment system. You don't want to necessarily be putting a lagoon next to an already existing subdivision, because lagoons are gonna have turnover and odors with them. If you're in the middle of the woods and there's no one nearby and you own the next forty acres that are downwind of that, a lagoon is a perfectly fine option.
So do I rely on? Uh you folks to make sure that it's right, our engineer, OHM, their developer, how do, you know, how do I? Make sure it's proper for the township, so to speak.
So our responsibility at Eagle is to make sure that the system that is being designed is being designed appropriately to be able to treat the wastewater. And then once a permit is issued, our responsibility is to make sure that the requirements of that permit are being met. If there are things that are a particular concern for the township, the appearance of the system, odors potentially associated with the system, um. I, you know, it's it's kind of, if there, if there are things that are a particular concern for your township that you think should be assessed. That would be something that that I'd say would be your responsibility to make sure you're looking at at those things and, you know, considering what what.
Like aesthetic characteristics, so to speak, or?
Yeah, those would be things that we have no control over, we're looking to make sure that the system is functioning appropriately and that it's able to treat the wastewater that's coming to it. So you can feel confident that we are doing, we are legally required to do that portion and we are doing that, but if there are things outside of that. That are important to your township and your residents, you would need to look.
Like can we ban, or like if, I don't know, can, but like banning, what do you call the the flush, flushable wipes, like. Could that be a condition, like you can't have flushable wipes in in your residence, I don't know if that's realistic, possible, doable?
We don't have a say in that, that would be like a township.
No, I know that, I know that, I man.
And we can't really give legal advice on how to do that.
Do other municipalities or other uh facilities ban them?
I'm not, I know individual developments sometimes do, I don't know if that.
So because I read about it in McComb County, the 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 something birds, fat birds, the these. Causes significant infrastructure issues, so.
I mean, I know, I would never say that public education is a bad thing, if you wanted to do a township level campaign. About the importance of not flushing flushable wipes, the importance of disposing of your cooking oils properly. I would never say that that is a bad thing to do.
Yeah, because we're just trying to tell people that they can't do certain things, we've seen municipalities trying to go to, go into homes, for example, and make sure that softening systems are disconnected. There might be legal authority to do that, but of course, then you're going into someone's home and trying to tell them what to do, and I've seen it get sticky, so.
Softening systems.
Uh water softeners, the the backwash from them, because they're, they're high in salt, um. So, yeah, it's, we usually say, public education, public outreach to let people know what they should and shouldn't be doing, tends to be. Better because you're not gonna be able to go home to home and like take people's wipes away.
Trust, trustee Noel.
Um SiO Township has an onsite sewer ordinance. When you are reviewing applications, are, do you refer to our ordinance? Do you have any knowledge of the ordinance?
No, that would be the township's responsibility to enforce your ordinance, we look at our federal regulations and state regulations for each compromise.
One of the features in our ordinance is the requirement that an SAD is established. For each one of these, and the developer has that obligation to do that. Um and you talked about how you needed to see a funding mechanism. So would the establishment of the SAD qualify as a sufficient funding mechanism?
I'm unfamiliar with what the term. Do you define that for me?
Special Assessment District, it's where the individuals or the entity that owns it. Uh sets up a mechanism for taxing the individuals. A set amount over a period of time.
Of course, if they could show that that amount would be sufficient to operate their wastewater treatment plant, then yes, that would probably be, probably meet the requirements of. Our policy.
So when in the process, would you be receiving the funding plan from Heritage Woods?
Right now, I have part of their plan currently, um but since we're waiting on. The denial of responsibility notice from the local unit of government.
Uh huh.
Um we normally receive that in the package.
You normally receive that sooner?
Yep.
Okay, and and so. I, because I I'm curious about that, about the funding with with something, because our ordinance does anticipate an SAD. This is a large, requires it, um and so I'm curious about something like. An assisted living facility where you have effectively renters, um how how that would work.
And some, so um assisted living centers can get into a little bit different permitting category for us, where they're they're sometimes looked at differently. So if it's one owner.
Yep.
Um because, so it's it's not a public system at that point, it's a, it's a privately owned system serving the public, so those actually. Have different requirements for us, and I don't know about your township ordinance, so but for us, they would be looked at differently.
So we'll be looking at the condos onsite.
Okay.
Rather than the assisted living facilities requirements.
You're looking at the, okay.
Break that down a little for me?
So part forty-one applies to any system that conveys waste from one or more owner.
Okay.
That's how we define that, since the assisted living facilities residents would be owned and maintained by one owner. Um that is outside of the jurisdiction of part forty-one, so all of the condos within that development. And the fact that it will convey waste from the condos and from the assisted living facility is what. Applies part forty-one, we wouldn't look into the individual funding within the assisted living facility. We would want to know that the owner has a way of billing the assisted living facility, not that the assisted living facility. Has a way of billing each individual member.
Right, right.
And how much would this, this type of facility cost to develop? Not not the, about, not Heritage Woods, but the.
I haven't looked at their finances yet, I've been focused more on their technical review. Um because really, that's the biggest piece of review for us, is is this technically feasible? And once I get to the, yes, this is technically feasible, then I dig into the deeper issues.
Do you have a ballpark number from your past experience?
Um.
They send the population, I guess.
Maybe a better question to ask the developer.
Yeah, I would ask the developer that question, I'm not super familiar with how much this will cost to operate, especially post-COVID.
Oh no, I was thinking of.
Everything after COVID got super expensive in construction, so.
Okay.
What used, what I used to know costs three million dollars is now ten million dollars, so. Yeah, that's true.
You think the developers will be honest with you? Come on. Um the support. Um I assume they they contract an engineer who advises on a system, then they have a system, and then it gets put in and. Tested and it's put online, and then you need a A, B, C, D, or whatever the kind, you know, operator. And then he or she comes around periodically and checks it, is it, or they're onsite, or do they have to do within. Ten minutes, twenty minutes, or thirty requirements with respect to uh proximity uh to the system by the operator? That you're aware of.
So there there's no requirement on like how far, how close they need to be to the facility itself. Um what our our rules say for certified operators is that they need to be. Reasonably in control and demonstrating that they're maintaining proper operation and maintenance at the facility. So they can actually determine how often they are at site, if they are in compliance with their permit and they're there. So some of our very simple facilities, they may be there once a month, and that's adequate for a very simple facility. Um others are especially as they're getting started, that operator might be there all day, every day for the first month, and then they might drop down to every other day. It it really kind of depends, SPRs are pretty good at running themselves, once they're, once they're up and going, so they wouldn't need, it's it's not like the. Large Ann Arbor wastewater treatment plant where they need multiple staff there all day, every day to run it. Um but so our rules don't, they, we can't go to that specificity of saying you have to be there. Every single day, but if we see, so during a compliance inspection, if they are not, if something is wrong with operation and maintenance, or we're seeing violations. That indicate that someone isn't there enough or taking care of things the way they need to be, then we can issue a violation for that failure to do proper operation and maintenance.
Are they usually run by companies that do this for a living, or do they take some guy who mows the lawn and have him get your, take your test? Pass that, how do they do that?
Most are contract operators that are hired, this is their all-day, everyday business, they run multiple sites. There will often be someone onsite, usually with maintenance, who's kind of checking the system, who will know like, hey, there's an alarm going off, I need to call the operator.
And the system will be required to have an alarm system, um so things like. Mechanical override, or flooding, or power outage, or one of their, for some reason, they've experienced high flow and they're overfilling a basin. They're required to have an alarm system to alert them, and they're required to respond to that in a reasonable time, so before disastrous events happen.
Rachel, I want to go back to the prior slide, the one that was about the word that you don't like to say, cessation.
Yes.
Um because this is a a question that's come up um in our conversation so far about approving. Uh a development that includes a wastewater treatment facility, um assuming that the township. Um that adopts a resolution and says, we do, we deny responsibility if this has problems. Um what, what happens when that happens, when when there is a cessation situation? Um is there uh still a burden on the municipality, or does the state step in, what, what, what happens?
So I think that gets a little bit into a legal realm, or for what would, what would happen after that, because there's been cases that. Where that question has kind of been called out, um. I, we're, we can't, we can't really comment as to to what would happen in that situation, um. Obviously, you can't have people living in homes that don't have functioning wastewater systems, um.
Can I ask a follow-up to Will's question, because, because, because this, I share this concern is, is imagining. We we have, we have um the Lhasa um private system, and then Thornton Farms is, you know, next door, but we don't have any private. This would be the very first private one here in SiO, so.
Farms is a private system.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so that's in the township next door, um so if we have a sys, temporary sys, or cessation. So immediately, okay, it, things aren't working. Um who steps in, in in terms of the the owner, because we're also talking about, you know, older folks, partially assisted living. Um I imagine that, I mean, obviously, we would all be scrambling around. Um even if we do deny responsibility, or you know, deny responsibility um through the, through the resolution. But I'm just curious, like, what would happen on day, you know, three of no plumbing? Like most immediately, what happens, is whose FEMA, SiO Township, anywhere in between?
So if it's, so when we're talking cessation of discharge-related activities, this is when a facility is is permanently going offline generally. So we look, so if it's less than nine months, um and and this is, these rules are written more for facilities that are gonna be seasonal. This is a sanitary system, so it needs to be functioning all day, every day, so it's, we would have no expected temporary downtime for this system. Um if if a system were down for three days and it was a permitted functioning facility. We could be hitting them with violation notices and saying, you have got to get the system up and running, um if it were something, an emergency situation, usually their only option is pump and haul. Where they are getting that waste into tankers and taking it to another functioning wastewater treatment plant for treatment.
And that would be the LLC.
Yes.
That has been formed.
Yes.
To be responsible for this.
It would be, we have had that pump and haul situation.
Have you?
Um we had a facility in Monroe County that actually had a fire, um.
Okay.
Total loss of the facility, they pump and halt, they pump and halt for a little over a month, and that was the responsibility of that. Entity that owned the system. Um and we did. Um to make sure that we could get them a new permit as quickly as possible, um but that was kind of the situation with that one.
Oh, go ahead.
You spoke earlier in your presentation about a two-year sort of funding uh window, so to speak. At what role seem we to five years, could you um expand on that a little bit, but how that works, what is that, what's the purpose of that?
The purpose of that is to fund operation and maintenance in case of an emergency, that's not general operation and maintenance, that's not. You know, we're a little low on cash this week, we'll just pull from our escrow account, that's um catastrophic failure of the system. Something broke and we need it replaced now, we don't have the time to use what's established in our operation and maintenance plan. Um because operation and maintenance plans are required to establish the lifetime of the equipment, so. A pump's average lifetime is about fifty years, they're required to be thinking, okay, we put this pump in twenty twenty-three. In twenty seventy-three, we're going to be, think about replacing that pump station. Um and so they're required to, you know, continue adding to their accounts to make sure that they have the funding in place to replace that equipment. When it does reach the end of its life, um so that escrow account is more for, you know, an emergency happened. We need this money now, and it's really just because with the municipality, we expect that the municipality does have. Extra funds for the case of emergency, with something like a private system. Um we wouldn't normally expect that they have the kind of resources to do emergency work, which is why we require that account.
And and the escrow account that you mentioned is controlled by who?
Um it's controlled by, um who is that one controlled by? I'm pretty sure that one is linked to the deed, um I think it's. Controlled, I think it has to have a set of requirements for when they get access to that money, it's not just liquid cash that they can use all the time.
I have a general question about, this is a groundwater discharge permit, but you also issue permits. For example, to discharge into Mill Creek, let me just use that as an example. Um how do the permits differ? And I know with direct discharge into. Um a river, that's considered the waters of the state. But the groundwater discharge is not considered the waters of the state.
So they're all, so groundwater is waters of the state as well, um and there are actually a lot of differences between the groundwater and the FPS permits. Um if I were going to summarize them though, in general, surface water discharge permits, the thing that they're primarily controlling for or or limiting, what can be discharged for is. Protect aquatic health and the environmental health of the the water body that they're discharging to. Also, in some instances, drinking water protection, if there's a drinking water, a surface water, drinking water intake downstream. Groundwater discharge permits, we have to protect the most protective use of that water, which is drinking water. So our permits, we're limiting, and we're looking at slightly different things, so, um for example, total organic nitrogen. When it's surface water discharge, the biggest concern is ammonia, because that's gonna kill the aquatic life very quickly. For our discharge permits, we're looking at the nitrate and the nitrite in particular, because we're concerned about blue baby syndrome. And people who are are impaired and not gonna have that that blood, uh that blood moving the oxygen around enough, so we want to make sure that our nitrate numbers aren't too high. So it's it's kind of, there are different things that the permits are looking for and protecting, and then kind of everything that goes along with that in the permit requirements. To to kind of match those differences of what we're protecting.
Back to someone, the the escrow account that we've talked about, someone, presumably someone at the state monitors that. Supposed to be a certain amount of money in that account, and and using your fifty-year example. Fifty years from now, someone's going to say there's sufficient funds in that account for.
We are not responsible for monitoring their finances, that's it. We do, I'm assuming they contract that, um that they have a financial advisor that they will be required to answer to. Um I have received questions on when facilities can use their escrow accounts, um it's not really our decision. Um we're just, they're required to set that up before.
Is that part? Is that part monitored? That, let's say, five years in, is our two years of O and M reserve still there? Okay, I just wanted to ver- verify that.
So this, this is a, maybe a question?
A question for the heritage, yeah. Especially when it's a, you know, it's a, I guess, I'll, questions for the developer, because there's a couple entities involved.
Also, in the Syo ordinance, we have a requirement of the system operator shall maintain a reserve sufficient for five years of monitoring, inspection, operation, maintenance, and repair of the system.
Oh, so ours is higher?
Yeah.
Good.
So we've got a different layer of protection.
That's a lot of money.
In our ordinance.
So who will be overseeing that?
I don't know.
Well, you. You're in the Gellman.
No, our.
This isn't related to Gellman.
No, no, the board.
I know, but I know.
Um, thank you very much, I think, I think we've reached the end of your, your.
Oh, go ahead.
Yep.
I live at that escrow property near there. So how close could another um system like this, or that size, be to another one? How far away would they have to be if there's going to be another development of some other properties, some other land, so across the street?
Yeah, so our groundwater permits are written so that their discharge can't be having an impact outside of their property area. So we're actually looking, so we set their discharge limits, it's a rapid infiltration basins. It needs to be meeting numbers that would be acceptable in the groundwater. So a discharge on, on their property would not have any impact on what your property would be allowed to discharge. Um, so we, we set those rules to make sure that, that one permitted discharge can't have any negative impact on the neighboring property, and what you want or what that's allowed to be in your property.
Thank you.
So there'd be no, no setback requirement, um, I, I guess, just, so there is a requirement that no discharge can be closer than one hundred feet to a property line. Which is applicable to everyone, but there would, there would be no, so it doesn't matter where their discharge is, it, there wouldn't, it wouldn't apply to any setback for yours.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This has been very educational.
Great presentation, thank you so much.
And uh, that brings us to our next presentation, which is uh the Sloan Kingsley Land Update. And um, I think we lost one of our presenters, but.
Take care.
Evening, Mr. Lutton.
Good evening. I'm sad to report that Carrie Kafapi was here, but has a need to be. This hour, so she has left. I asked her to come because I thought you might well have more questions for her and what her program is about.
I, I spoke with her briefly and um suggested that maybe we could find another opportunity for her to come and present about her organization to the board. I mean, this is obviously going to be an ongoing discussion.
I don't know, uh, I, I think there's ample time for that to happen, I'm sorry, she has three and a half hours here, uh, and not get her a chance, but uh let me say a couple of things. Many of the characterizations of meetings that have occurred, or shall I wait for? I've been disappointed tonight by some of the characterizations of the meetings, the conversations that went on between your supervisor and Mr. Lonik and me. And I guess Doug Luwan was mentioned. They were professional, they were informational for me. Who else are you going to call? The CEO of the unit here, and there is you have other problems, obviously, as a board, there is distrust. I think more of it has been sown with some of the characterizations regarding my conduct. I was referred to by one of the gallery here as not honorable. This is a really turning into a sideshow, Syo Township government. It's, it's, you, you need to improve the way you are functioning, and I'll leave it at that. I am David Lutton, a forty-two year resident of the township professionally. I was a realtor in the community and for the last, for forty-five years, I was with the Reinhardt Company. In the last twenty years, I owned the company. I have served on many nonprofit boards, and one note that I'll make of one of those nonprofit activities. I have been for twenty-three years since it began, a member of the NAM program, Natural Area Preservation Program of the county. All of your tax dollars at work. Uh, that program helps the Syo program to fund land acquisition frequently. Uh, I am on the committee that recommends what properties get purchased by the county, what conservation easements can purchase by the county. So I have that bundle of experience in land conservation. One of the reasons you didn't know anything about this is it's moved rather quickly. I made a decision after conversations with Will Hathaway and Mayor Keough and other experts and people with more knowledge about many subjects than I have to abandon a high density residential program on the land that did involve at one point the proposal for the annexation of all of it. Uh, that discussion was couched as a four twenty-five approach. I came away from both a Dexter Council meeting and a uh Syo Board meeting not believing that a four twenty-five agreement was either likely or perhaps even possible. Uh, that was one of the criteria that caused us to pull back. I want to talk about that high density program for just a minute. And I said much of this, although some of you are new since I was here last. I took the high density program, which would be allowable under the two thousand twenty-one Syo Master Plan, and something called the Gateway District, the corridor along Baker Road to Dexter. Higher density would be allowed under that new master plan. We took that as a positive sign and had a, another piece of the puzzle that would help us to do it. But the real reason I wanted to do high density development there from my position in the real estate market, I am keenly aware of the lack of workforce housing in Washington County. More and more, we are seeing workers having to commute great distances. Every employer I know is short of help. We, and yet residents or workers, many of them can't afford to live in our county. We've seen it happen in Dexter, we've seen it happen in Celine, and it's happening now in Chelsea. The ring further and further out from Ann Arbor is getting more and more expensive. I wanted to bring workforce housing to the western half of the county. I also wanted to create product described as falling below the median sale price in the area, and specifically in the Dexter School District where this property is. And I wanted to design a greater supply of uh one level living, senior citizens. We have ten thousand people a day in this country turning sixty-five. I'm now seventy-five, and I'm watching my friends begin to wrestle with where are we going to live? And they go out to the marketplace and try to find ranch style living, and they can't find it, or it's not affordable, or both. And so that was my motivation, trying to accomplish a social good for the marketplace with that high density proposal. I said there was no story to tell to the Syo Board or the Dexter Council through the fall of twenty twenty-two because the plan that I'm presenting to you tonight didn't exist. Wouldn't fortune, I was introduced by a friend to Gary Kafapi and have learned of the cause that she is at the helm of as the executive director of, we'll call it Many Hands. There's another name for the, the nonprofit, but that is the DBA that she's operating under. I met her in January. Things fell into place neatly, there was some business that she had to settle in their land quest, they had an offer in on another property. They preferred our Baker Road location, Dexter location, and we moved as expeditiously as we could. She got out of her other entanglement. We, she produced an offer, the attorneys worked it, and we signed an agreement in early March. At that point, uh, she began due diligence as called toward the contract and uh, also began designing uh what the site plan will look like. Knowing full well, and one of the contingencies in our purchase agreement is that, of course, she will be going through that organization, will be taking their plan through the planning commission here. There was never an intent to not communicate, it's a case of this has all happened very quickly. Something the private sector is capable of, and governmental units have a harder time with. I'll stop with the editorial comments. So we signed a purchase agreement in, in March, and I've been in conversation with Barry Lonik. I've known Barry for twenty-three years as part of the, the county program. And we decided that getting back to the, we, we made an application as I was beginning to see the hopes of the high density project evaporate. We made it an application to the Syo program. Well, it had been more than six months, and we, we decided, let's go back and, and talk to them. Lonik is charged with making things happen for that program. I had said to him earlier, and let me back up and say with any of the plans that have been presented on this site, the intent has always been to do a conservation piece with Syo Township. So uh, we now had a story to tell, it had changed, and the conservation piece had actually gotten larger. There were previous conversations with Barry suggesting that the whole piece be purchased, that won't fly because of the economics. I, I can't afford to sell the whole piece to Syo Township. I saw a summary sheet, an email with the person's name on it stating facts and figures and dates, I don't agree with everything that's in that.
I just printed it, um, the manager produced that from our assessing records. Okay.
There's a story there, but frankly, it doesn't matter. I wasn't the original owner, the properties were purchased on land contracts and one with a bank loan and some interesting financing, all of that predated my involvement with the the project. So my numbers are different, but uh, the economic piece is important, and we're not doing this without the hope of making some profit at the end. So uh, we, that is Kafapi, we've worked as quickly as possible. We came back to the Land Preservation Commission and told the story. And I realized that set off the firestorm. Our intent has been to come to the board and tell the same story, but their meeting was sooner, we came to that. I immediately had conversation with Trustee Riser and also Supervisor Hathaway and informed them of what we were doing with Dexter, and this appearance tonight was scheduled. There, there isn't malfeasance here, and again, the content of the meetings were professional and no, no representations were made, and your supervisor wasn't, wasn't selling you out in any, any way. We still have a tremendous amount of work to do. In your packet, on about page hundred and ten or twenty somewhere, or two pages that were presented to the Land Preservation Commission. It's kind of fresh material that I discovered. So let's, let's work off of that, I'm just going to talk about that outline. What's in your materials was a one-page written document explaining the project and the benefits as we perceived them, and the second page is a map, and I guess I saw you have another map in there too. So I'll just quickly go through the, the components of the project. Take questions from you, Barry Lonik is here, wants to comment, that'll be fine. I will try to answer questions regarding Many Hands, but the expert has, has left the room, so here we go. A project with three distinct land uses as follows. Conservation piece that I've mentioned, it has gotten larger than was originally planned. Uh, it includes a woods and wetlands acreage that has been on the radar of and I know this because of my role on the Natural Area Technical Advisory Committee. Conservation is radar and Barry and Syo's radar for many, many years. The wood, this expands it and gets us into some agricultural land, but that piece also would be, it's on the north edge of the property, running along the industrial park Dexter. This could be a connector piece to properties on the west side of the road. There are two pieces of natural preserves there, and then our piece of twenty-one acres in the middle of that. That piece has a arsenic contamination, we are aware of it. There is program here is aware of it, that would need to be mitigated before your program was by those. To existing preserves, and it was the arsenic that frankly caused you not to buy it ten years ago when you bought the rest of the stuff. So we're aware of that, and our intent would be to do the mitigation. So the piece is, is a bit bigger, and there's talk, and I'm not the expert on this, but parking lot being part of the equation to get people to the trail system. There is a parking lot on the west side of the road in the preserve that exists already. These are details that are going to get worked out with site plan. But the, I think part of the appeal is the creation of more. the creation of more CIO Township trail system potential to link into either city of Dexter or county trails as well. So that is the conservation piece. I have made it clear to the commission, however, made a couple things clear. I was pressed by the chair. Would there be a possibility of some flexibility terms of a sale? He was expressing a concern about the availability of funds for their program. I recognize those go up and down as they make purchases. And I did say that we probably could offer some flexibility on timing. I also said, however, is that the conservation piece won't happen till we have approval of the many hands, nonprofit campus and approval of the annexation piece. The three are tied together in my mind. It won't be dealt with in pieces. So the second piece, I I mentioned my high density plan a year ago was I thought meeting of social good for the county. The nonprofit campus, eighty-seven acres of both residential and agrarian use represents another social good, a different, quite different social good. But when you hear the story of what her organization is trying to do, it's pretty hard to argue that this isn't needed very badly and would would be a great positive for Washtenaw County. The their business is caring for developmentally disabled adults. Probably the most common part of this might be people on the autistic spectrum. Those your end of that spectrum. What I have been struck by is in the three months four months now that we've been working on this is how many people in the community have talked to people expressed very personal needs. You hear from the parents of these children that they are obsessed with what's gonna happen when I die. And there is not enough of this kind of care available. I have been struck by how many people have expressed to me. I have a cousin. I have a niece. I have something, someone in the family who requires this kind of care. And and Carrie Kafapian tells me that there is now need since I think she told me twenty eighteen or nineteen, that the federal funding of care, much like social security or other programs, it's through one of the medical programs. There is now formalized federal dollars to support this kind of program. And that's at the core of her organization's plan to create this campus and to create this care facility. Probably the closest to this that we have would be the St. Louis Center out southwest of Chelsea. But there is a tremendous need. I'm aware of another community of this kind of care in Ann Arbor called intentional community. That's a phrase that Carrie uses as well. But it feels to me from my discussions with her that they would be caring for people further into the spectrum. The intentional community that I'm familiar with in Ann Arbor is a group of condominiums that have staff, but the children, but they're adults. Range, you know, age twenty to twenty-five to fifty in this community, but they hold part-time jobs. They're able to function further on their own. I think Carrie's community would be dealing with tougher cases than than that. Again, I'm not the expert. They are building a a site plan for submission to the planning commission and that will be coming as soon as as they can produce it. We're doing soil and other investigations with the county. So that story is coming to CIO Township soon.
Just a one question that had come up in other conversations. That portion of the development or the that campus would be well-accepting. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. The other thing I wanted to share with you, and I am not sure I've shared this with the other two meetings I've been in, is that one of yours is deeply involved. Jan Culbryton, the chair of the planning commission, is the architect for this many hands project. Very committed to it, I believe. Clearly, I think she will have a recusal issue when the time comes, but I I mentioned that as a point of interest. The third piece of the development is the annexation piece forty-five plus or minus acres. This, we believe, would consist of seventy to seventy-five single-family home sites. It's immediately south of the existing Dexter Crossing neighborhood in Celine. Celine, excuse me, Dexter. And getting punchy here. I note that, first of all, the city water and sewer systems are right there. And there apparently is, from our conversations with Dexter, there is sufficient capacity to add seventy or seventy-five homes to that system. If you've ever been back to the back of that subdivision, the streets run right to our property and stop urban gutter and streets paved. I have to believe Dexter when fifteen years ago or twenty years ago, when that subdivision was planned, assumed that this was going to extend into a new neighborhood to the south, given the way the roads were designed. So so water and sewer city road systems would be part of this. And that is should be annexed into Dexter. I was intentional in my letter not to say hostile annexation or even state boundary commission, which is how hostile annexation works. I have not closed to a four twenty-five agreement. I'm just skeptical that it can get done. This is incredibly logical place for housing development to occur adjacent to all the services and adjacent to existing housing. The housing will not be what I had envisioned trying to create workplace, both apartments and smaller homes or senior citizen housing. It will likely be more of what exists in Dexter Crossing, which today is probably moving past the half million dollar price mark or or even a little higher than that. But so be it. We need all kinds of housing in Washtenaw County. The market is down because of COVID and federal reserve interest rate increases. And certainly the latter is is really what's what's holding the market down a little bit. But we still have a very active real estate market. Ann Arbor, the center of the universe, is still attracting people and is still growing. And as a result, the Dexter's, Chelsea's, Celine's are all growing too. So there is a need for housing. If you all have the sheet in front of you, I won't run through the benefits, but I think this list of benefits is real. True benefits and the jobs provided for the employees at facility. There would also be workforce housing provided for some of those employees. There also is a component in their plan, I believe, to add smaller homes. She's referred to them as cottages. Maybe something of the size of the one out here on Island Lake Road in Dexter. We all know it. It's just
And the Gordon Hall property?
On the Gordon Hall property, yeah, but I can't say the name of it in a second, but this housing would be for families of children in care. Adult children in care, I guess would be the right phrase. So I think that covers what we're doing. The annexation process is not anything more than a conversation last night with council and my formal request that Dexter consider annexation. I would ask, this property has been up in the air for a long time. Time is money in the development business. Look at my friends, Smiths over there. It, we need some urgent action. I my goal would be to have us through the approval process by first quarter of next year and be able to to move forward, both with conservation piece, the sale to many hands. And the third piece, let me clarify, I do not intend to build the homes in the annexation piece. This would be sold to a qualified builder. But I want to take it through the annexation and a site plan approval process. In discussions with Dexter to do some of that simultaneously in order to save some time, i.e. money for a developer.
Site plan for many hands or site plan for the forty-five acres?
The last site plan I referenced would be for the forty-five acres, which would be a Dexter process as opposed to a CIO process.
So Dave, you're and you're saying to get your goal, first quarter, to get then the many hands, how far through the process?
Site plan approved, able to move ahead with their closing and begin construction.
Okay. And and I don't know if Jan or somebody else, and maybe we don't know yet if this would be a PUD request. We may not know that. Somebody told me that. I don't remember who. I think it was Jan.
I'm recalling myself and I've
That's okay.
Been in some of those discussions, but I I've not been attending their planning meetings with their engineers and so forth. So but again, it's it's going to be forthcoming as quickly as they can manage it and get it into the the system here.
So what's the order of things that have to that you envision things happening? Checking before the end, what, how does this shake out?
Well, there there, I think that, and I've said this to Barry Lannick, the simplest piece. Both he and I have been doing this for twenty-plus years, he longer than I. There would be a new appraisal on the property and closing when funds are available for CIO. What I expect Barry is going to do, and we haven't talked about this. He'll take this project to the NAP program, the county program, and see if they'll pay for some of it, which we've done. We, the NAP program, have done many times in the past. I would assume there would be a level of cooperation. I would be recusing myself, obviously, from that one, I I believe, is the simplest. And we may actually be waiting to get the new appraisal and so forth until some of the progress on the many hands, site plan going through planning commission, the annexation process, and potentially a site plan for that annexation piece. So multiple fronts simultaneously.
John or Barry, just so I I clarify that the open space process, the appraisals, that what we typically do, right?
We commissioned that appraisal.
Yeah.
I've got a few questions. Um. You had referenced the soil conditions. The parcel that would be the many hands parcel theoretically. What are the soil conditions like on that parcel and how much testing has been done?
I'm not the soils expert, but there has been drilling that we did. We got praised with use earlier. Hydro geo study or something. So we had that. There has been one set of tests on any hands land for, again, the original plan here was to do a, what you've been talking about the previous hour, to do wastewater, private wastewater treatment plant for this high-density community. And the soil hydro geo study basically told us that would be a stretch. So in addition to my ill-fated four twenty-five proposal to both boards, that was part of our decision. They've completed one site worth of work for many hands. Another one is scheduled soon. And so we'll have more information about the soils as that work is completed. So far, my understanding is that the the tests look favorable for what many hands wants to do. And I didn't get into any of that detail. Many hands is talking about eight residences. This is interesting. For clients or patients, whatever you want to call them, who require care, there would be four of those residents in a six thousand square foot house with a bunch more bedrooms and bathrooms. And that's because some of their staff, and again, this is a twenty-four-hour care process, some of their staff will be living on site. Not not all of it, but some of it is my understanding. They intend to build eight of these roughly six thousand square foot residences that will look like big houses. And additionally, there's some agricultural buildings that they want to to do with some hoop houses and so forth. The agricultural piece, I should have talked about this earlier. The agricultural piece is part of the therapy and care for the residents. So their plan, I think, is calling for a total of ninety-six or a hundred residents, thirty-two of which would be people in care. So it's a very interesting combination of things. And one other thing that has been talked about with Barry is that they have expressed an openness to potentially when their property is built out. They're planning to have sixty or seventy percent of it has agricultural open space that they might enter into a conservation easement for that agricultural portion with the CIO program. That's not in our contract with many hands. It's not anything that's happened yet. It's your program, but it is something that Ms. Kafapian has said that they would consider. So and that ties in with some of the work you've done with purchase, protect, and then resell of agricultural land. This wouldn't be a resale, but it would be a preservation tactic to put a conservation easement on the ag land portion of their their development. preservation tactic to put a conservation easement on the ag land portion of their, their development. A lot of issues still to be hammered out, a formal site plan to be submitted. I can't answer too many questions about that, but conceptually, that's what I, I believe.
So would there be communal living in this facility?
I haven't heard that term. But I don't know what the right term is. But I think they, they might, I'll, I'll leave that to Ms. Kafavian to talk about. I don't know the detail of it. Patients and care providers is, as far as I've got.
Well, in a house. But my understanding from Jan is twelve, roughly twelve people per each of the eight homes.
Twelve each, yeah, times, times eight, but, but four, four in care and the other eight staff.
Right, right. So there's different, of course, you know, licensing, but also. Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Kathy.
So many hands would own the structures, buildings?
Yes, eighty-seven of the two hundred and thirty-seven acres.
And how did, how did the requirement of the eighty-seven come to be?
Well, it was a negotiated process with probably assistance from the engineers who also do the survey and so forth. They're the ones who mapped it out and, again, I haven't been part of all of those meetings. We started the discussion talking about sixty to eighty acres for them and it ended up at eighty-seven. I can't explain the reason for that. It's agreeable to it.
The neighborhood, so this process, there's three parts. And you said the first part would be, have to be the annexation part of it, in order for the rest of the plans to?
Not, not the first part, but all three projects need to get to a positive conclusion. Or the many hands and the annexation piece have to get to a positive conclusion before I will sell the land into the conservation.
Okay.
Piece. In my mind, it's all tied together.
And, and just to chime in, and the positive conclusion for the stage you're talking about for many hands is getting through at least site, site plan, something like that, because they?
I can't recall, Jessica, what our purchase agreement says, I'd have to review it, but
That's fine.
There are benchmarks that when they clear those benchmarks, then they would be in a position to close.
Gotcha. And, and the only reason I say that, Jelaine, is just when I look at this, you know, many hands, I, I've read all about the website, love the model, looked at different models. You know, they have a, a, a steep hill to climb, okay, to build this program. You know, the operating of these kind of facilities and things, and so I, I'm, I'm all, I'm, I'm supportive of their model, but I'm just saying that there is a possibility, I think, a possibility that that, you know, may not come to fruition, it's possible, right? There's risks in everything.
My understanding is they would intend to build out their community in phases and there is fundraising attached to each of those phases. She does point out, and again, she can explain this better than I can, but that the funding stream for the care is pretty, pretty solid and I think it's the construction side, getting it built is the task that's facing fundraising in order to build. They, they have a secure commitment for the purchase of the land.
Yeah, that's what she said.
Those dollars are, are raised at this point.
So regarding the annexation of, well, the parcel, so it's the, the square?
Yeah.
Upright.
Yeah, but the, it looks like there's some lakes.
There are some wetlands.
Wetlands, okay, so there's, there would have to be permitting and whatnot, but there's the, and then you talked about, isn't that the crossings? Dexter Crossing is at the neighborhood and that would be?
If you're at Bushes and you look across the street at the strip mall?
Yeah.
Dexter Crossing is all the houses behind that and there are guessing.
Is that an HOA, would you have to go through, I mean, I'm assuming that I haven't, I studied up on the process a little bit, so I'm not an expert by any means. So a public hearings for that neighborhood would have, and then it would really come down to Dexter saying, yes, we want to annex, because if they say no, then does the state or, I don't know anything about it.
Dexter has to say yes to the annexation in order?
In order for this to work.
In order for this to work.
Oh, okay.
That's the first yes we have to
Okay.
Have to get.
And so that neighborhood, I'm assuming that Dexter, if it was in SIO, if they were doing something like this, and yet, because they're going to be driving through that neighborhood to get to their neighborhood or to your development.
That would be correct, the city streets that service that community now will be extended into.
Go ahead, I have a quick question. So when you came and spoke to us before, one of the things you talked about potential for twenty-five is collaboration between the two municipalities potentially. And you had said that we would need to negotiate revenue sharing and the term of the lease, which I know is typical, we negotiate for twenty-five. In theory, so we want to make, I'm trying, we all want to maintain an open attitude here. So in theory, all of us are going to want to consider some of the benefits that might come to SIO Township. That's natural. At least we have to consider them. And I'm reading through your list of community benefits. You have down increases tax and utility revenues for Dexter. But?
Construction of seventy or seventy-five homes, it would occur.
Are you envisioning the potential for revenue sharing? Is what I'm asking.
Well, I haven't gotten that far. I will say to you and I was proposing higher parcel be annexed under four twenty-five, I did a mock-up four twenty-five agreement, presented it to the mayor and his staff. It would have generated, recall actual numbers, but it would have generated something like forty to fifty times, I think I built a three-year model of revenue sharing. In that three-year period, it would have generated forty to fifty times the income that Dexter would be receiving on the vacant land. I don't know what Dexter's attitude is about revenue sharing and you've appointed your committee and have those discussions. The, I will point out to you, the benefit is your master plan called for the Gate Bay District and high density development possible. You are preserving the more rural character there along Baker Road. You are gaining a hundred and eleven ridges of newly conserved land that also links to other properties you already own to SIO. I'm aware that you've been building sort of a corridor of conserved land between Zee Road and Baker Road. You are adding to that and then add the possibility of trail systems and so forth. Those are benefits for both SIO and Dexter residents. That's one more thing. Currently, your revenue from this parcel is forty-five acres. Total tax revenue is about twenty thousand dollars a year. SIO's piece of that, I don't believe exceeds three or four thousand dollars a year. So the loss to SIO is negligible in the big picture.
I understand what you're saying. I see that. But when the land is developed with seventy-five houses worth approximately five hundred thousand dollars per house, it change, it changes the potential tax value of that parcel. And if that were still, I mean, I'm just commenting, everything changes with development.
Sure does. I would say that from my perspective, economically, the annexation piece is the most important piece because I'm paying for I'm receiving much lower values of the conservation land less than the annexation piece on the many hands piece. And so the annexation piece makes this proposal that I brought you work without it, it doesn't work. Alternatives that I have would be to potentially develop large acreage, state-sized parcels and so forth. We don't need more luxury housing in the marketplace. We need every other kind of housing except luxury housing. And yet, what's getting built in Greater Ann Arbor so often now has a seven, eight hundred, nine hundred million dollar tag on it. That's not what I want to do, to contribute to my community as a developer. But is it an option? Carve up the woods and do estate lots in there? Barry's cringing. He knows I'm an environmentalist, but, you know, what are my options here? I've been trying to move ideas forward without much luck for nearly three years now.
No, just a question on the open space piece of it. So taking a step back to shape, so how does this fit into our pros plan? Is this, is this one of the, and I just don't know off the top of my head, is this part of the pathway we're trying to build or, do you know off the top of your head?
Well, I know it's not in the pros plan per se because it's not land that SIO Township had
Yeah, yeah.
Under control.
Was this part of like the pathway plan?
There is a pathway network that leads up to the corner. We have an easement, in fact, Barry probably can talk to this, you know, much more knowledge, well, I'm actually not probably, Barry can talk to this much more knowledgeably than me, but there is a, an easement to have access to a trail system that we could create.
I think the essence of her question is, this looks to be a pretty gerrymandered parcel. How, how, how do we shoehorn that into public access and the pros plan?
Well, the public, public access piece of it.
I'm just saying, where, where is it documented that this shape, this strangely shaped piece of land is a priority for SIO?
Well, let me, Jessica responded, one says, the L-shaped piece, ignoring the northern strip.
Yeah.
The L-shaped piece is all woods and wetlands. It is number one on the conservation group's objectives there. They, they want that parcel of land. The strip moving toward Baker Road is granted what's left, it creates a buffer between the industrial park and it potentially connects to preserves on the west side, that strip that is what I'm talking about. And in the discussions with, with Barry, I think I've gathered that a trail would be possible there. Perhaps beneficial, and I'll shut up and let you talk.
All the way to Marshall Road. We, we bought a couple of parcels last year from Loveland, just over here that provided us with, with Marshall Road furniture. We bought a piece of woods from Mercer years ago that connects to that. As well as saying, we have a little access easement in the northeast corner of the next property, which is the Levine and Kemter Nature and Nurture property that we can only utilize if we have access from the southeast, which we have now, and to the northwest, which we would have in this process. So we'd be able to connect Marshall Road all the way to the city of Dexter and to Baker Road and potentially, you know, across the road to the preserve, linking up all the, not only lands that we own, but also further to the west of there, we have conservation easements on the Davenport Farm. And so we're linking up all of those properties together.
And, and there are also ways, to state the obvious, to, to have a trail without purchasing this. Correct? Don't we have easements for, for trails on private land as well?
If they sell it to us.
Well, and there's a gas pipe that goes through there. When we have to have an easement.
No, I'm trying to, I'm just saying.
Yeah, you're right.
So, I guess they, Dave, to the extent, well, I guess, might there be some flexibility in how the green parcel ends up looking to the extent that many hands? You know, because it's eighty-seven or does, does it have to be eighty-seven to them because of the, there's a little?
That's not what, I mean, yeah, I mean, it sounds like the eighty-seven is done, which is, which is good. That's not my question. My, I'm just saying, like, this, this looks like the leftovers.
Well, again, if you're on the site, it looks like the woods. With then an agricultural strip going to Baker Road. It doesn't, it, it's very logical in terms of capturing all of the woods. And, and that is eighty or ninety percent of the total land area is in the woods.
And then on the, on the west, are there, there's, where's township land vis a vis the square on the west?
Both sides of it, north and, north and south.
Where, where your finger is.
Yeah, no, I know.
You're right.
So, um, ten years ago, arsenic, we didn't buy it, was, was that a consideration from the open space program? I don't know the history of that, Donna or Barry, Kathy?
I was not aware that that situation existed.
Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Jim Heiser owned this parcel. The intent that he had was to put in private septic system and that's why he bought this.
Gotcha.
That's, that's where the wastewater treatment facility would have gone if, if it had met with Eagle Approval
Gotcha.
For the denser development, but then when that didn't happen, it really pulled a, you know, support out from underneath dense development unless you could get municipal water sewer somewhere.
When I spoke to Fury, I asked him questions about the arsenic.
Yeah.
So maybe you can?
Yeah, could you share your history information?
So we did not buy that twenty-one acres because it was found in our, our due diligence that there was very high levels of arsenic found in the soils there. It was, nobody knows how they got there. The best idea that we have is that there's naturally occurring arsenic in upper soil layers. Dick Sloan, whose family owned that property for a long time, at one point indicated, when he was much younger, that there was gravel mining that happened back there and the surface soils were, were pushed off to have better access to the gravel. And so the best thing that we ever came up with was that the upper soil layers containing arsenic all got piled together and concentrated. It's all spread out, not so, not so bad, but concentrated in piles back there. And after we went back and forth for quite some time about possible remediation scenarios, we just said, you know, we just won't buy that twenty-one acres at this point. And so we originally bought thirty-three, added seventeen to the north to create our fifty-acre preserve there now. We'd love to have that twenty-one acres. It's got Mill Creek frontage, which is the state natural river. We're, you know, surrounding that with our We're, you know, surrounding that with our, our preserve as it is.
A fair amount of wetlands. I think I've seen one of the environmental studies that labeled out of the twenty-one acres for five acres were the concentration of arsenic.
Correct.
And so again, we, we understand that there will be no sale of that land without mitigation of the, the problem. The mitigation standards for use for a trail system, for example, are easier to meet than if you wanted to do residential development on the site, people living there. Arsenic contamination, as I understand it, you must come into physical contact with the, the arsenic in order, or to have a problem, and I'll stop there because I don't know the science of it.
Thank you. What is east of Barry's this way? Do you have the, the map of?
Yes, so east of the, this property is a residential neighborhood in the township. It is, what's the name of that road? Forshee Lane.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right, right.
South of that road, there's a bunch of different parcels there. And those are all occupied. It's not like the.
Well, in subject.
Correct.
I'd like to caution the group that until plans are brought, let's not get into vice Becky, you know, what it's going to look like and so forth. I don't know all those answers yet, and your, your questions seem to be raising possible concerns for later.
How about a, um?
And I, and I don't agree that this is a gerrymandered parcel because if you see it, the woods dominate how that parcel.
I, I was just commenting on the unusual character. I, I wasn't meaning to be.
One of your questions, is there some flexibility on the eighty-seven acres? And I believe the answer to that is a little.
Okay.
But again, the engineers and site planners have to figure those answers out.
And, and then how about the type of, and are you, do you have, how about with respect to the type of annexation, whether it's a four-twenty-five or one oh eight? I, I got the, you know, the municipal guides here. There's different forms of annexation. Are you open to all of them to the extent that SIO and Dexter are able to come to some kind of agreement? You have a preference?
Speed.
I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, I'm going to do what's necessary, I guess. That's not a threat. You've appointed your committee. I heard the mayor last night talking about a delegation from their side. Let's get busy and, and talk it through and see if a four-twenty-five agreement will work. If not, I will go to the boundary commission, solution, the hostile annexation. It, it is pivotal to this overall plan, which has that wonderful list of benefits that nobody appears to be arguing about. Those benefits are real.
I think we see that there are benefits.
I'd, I'd like to suggest that because I think we've covered a lot of, a lot of ground, so to speak, literally, and like two hundred and thirty-seven acres. But we do have some other things, at least one, that we would hope to take action on, and we have people waiting for us to take action on it. So I would like to thank you, Dave, for giving a very thorough presentation and Barry for being here to answer questions. And we'll, we'll have further conversations about this, obviously.
Yeah, and the mayor of Dexter emailed a letter over and said he looks forward to talking. So tomorrow, I'll let him know we made a decision and happy to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Now, we are past eleven o'clock. We do have one more action item on our agenda. I, I would like to suggest that we at least tackle that action item for which the Smiths have been patiently waiting. And I don't think it's going to take us that much time. So if, if everyone is in agreement that we extend our time to include that, I, that's what I would recommend.
And then, and after the action item?
I think so, because the other item, I think, as it's, it's, it's discussion only, we can include, we can incorporate it into our next meeting. And actually, that would meet the, as I looked at the minutes, it would meet the standard that we established, which was all, everybody present, unless, you know, obviously things are beyond our control, but Mark is supposed to be back for the meeting on the night.
And I would like that to be at the, the top of the agenda or close to the top of the agenda.
Yeah.
We can put it as, we can put it close to the top of the agenda, and we can put it.
What else do we have though? Are there other items?
And then.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We've got lots of other stuff. You mean tonight?
Tonight.
Do we have?
We have a lot of other stuff on.
We have deadlines on the road commission stuff.
That, that's, that's, that's the one challenge. John, you raised a good point of, of combining the conversation about the essay, the Fund Four Hundred with the road commission deadline, because I'm just saying, we, we'll just have to process it. I think that there's lots of options. I think there's ways to fund the, the road commission pro- projects without Fund Four Hundred. I think there's ways to, I think there's lots of options. It would be helpful to have some understanding of what direction the board is going tonight. But, you know, we, we, I would personally, what I would do, I'm already preparing in my head, I would, I would have three possible action items, three possible directions to go on the road.
Rather, rather than actually creating.
That's for next.
An, an agenda item.
I'm just saying, it'll be more complex, but we can do it.
I, I would recommend that we proceed with the agenda that we have in front of us that we already approved and to take the next item, which is.
It's going to be harder, John.
Is the possible action on the brownfield plan for three hundred North Zee Road. And we have that plan in front of us, and we also have Mark Smith here and.
Thank you, Mark and Linda.
And Linda. Both, both Smiths.
Thank you. I have one question. Will there be a public comment after, are you going to stick to the agenda and have a public comment?
Yes.
We, we.
Absolutely.
We, we have a rules of order that always have include that second public comment, so that's part of the agenda as well.
And our, yeah, go ahead, John.
I would like to move the model motion, just juncture so that we can talk about it.
So moved by risers, support by Palmer to adopt the attached resolution approving the Washtenaw County Brownfield redevelopment authorities attached to plan for three hundred North Zee Road. So with that.
Just a point of order. I don't know if Nathan is waiting to come in the right, we might have a guest.
There might be, there might be an eye in there.
We might have shed our.
Sorry, Nathan.
I know it was his intention to. I just don't want to not recognize him if he's here. If not, I'm prepared to vote on this.
We see you, Nathan.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Thank you for hanging in there.
Sure.
We, so I think, the sense I have is that people may be ready to vote because we did have a very thorough presentation on this a couple of meetings ago. And some of us have had an opportunity to meet with Nathan and, and with Mark and, and on this several times to, to talk about it. So unless there are a lot of questions, are, are we ready to move forward with voting on this? All right, well then, I would call the question, or not call the question, ask for you to call the role, please, for Flintoff.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
That brings us to our final, unless you had something you wanted to say. Yeah, brings us to public comment, and you are, you actually are, you're first in line because you are present. Thank you, Nathan.
Thanks.
Right.
Oh.
I just, I wanted to comment on the last gen of item with Dave Lutton. You know, he's, he's been a townie for a long time. He's got high integrity. He's a, he's a, you know, honorable guy, and he's going to try to find a good solution. We also have unique knowledge of intentional communities of Washtenaw County because we developed two houses along Liberty with the intent of placing them in it. We think that's a wonderful cause that they have, a good community that's needed. The intentional communities group, when we were dealing with them, were a hundred and eighty-seven families with developmentally different children that needed support. And the model that we saw was, was very exciting. They put life coaches in, living, integrated into the community with these adults, and we've worked closely with I Y C. They're actually a tenant of ours. And we're only more recently acquainted with Many Hands, and we've had some discussions with them. So we'd love to support anything that happens there because my HQ has worked closely with a, a couple of manufacturers and I, intentional communities to try to come up with a, a model that would employ many of, of the intentional community members. We, we worked with a company in Holland called Can Do, which trained, assess, trained and employed three hundred developmentally different adults to assemble things like medical devices, repackage goods for companies like Menards. It's definitely a part of our workforce that we're underutilizing, and they can find meaningful work and contribute. And it's, it's really amazing to see the development and the, the benefits that are gained by including them in our community. So I would support Dave Lutton and the Many Hands community.
Win well.
Yeah. Yes.
Do you remember way back when, we used to have a picture up in the hallway. There was a woman that started an organization or a group that she would then develop. Can't say that word.
Developmentally different or developmentally just, yeah.
I can't remember her name, but she really was the cuss. And now here's another one. We've got St. Louis.
Yeah. I, I don't recall who that was. Of course, you know, Dick Carlisle is heavily involved in intentional communities. The nice thing about what's being proposed, I heard, I heard a question asked about fundraising. Within that hundred and eighty-seven families, when we were dealing with them, there were some very successful people that were going to help fund that. So I, I don't know that funding is going to be their biggest challenge. I think it's trying to explain the model, trying to find a place where they can put it. We had developed two houses side by side, and we were limited in the number of bedrooms because our, our ordinances limit the unrelated adults to six in a house. The house, you know, it's a big, beautiful house. It's eight thousand square feet, and it was built with the intention of having community spaces, individual rooms, and life coaches there to work with them. So it, it's a great model in my opinion.
Thank you, Linda. You are also present. Would you also like an opportunity to speak during public comment?
I was in chair of the same meeting. He had another meeting. Thank you.
We're waiting for you. We're slowing it down.
Do we have people still with us who would like to speak during public comment remotely?
We have one hand up, Joe Sumaferro.
Hi, my name's Joe Sumaferro. I'm on the Dexter City Council. I'm not representing the council tonight, but I was at the table last night. Mr. Lutton presented to us. I wanted to make a couple of comments based on the presentation tonight and the presentation we heard as well. Number one, the, there was a comment earlier, somebody, I apologize, without the video, it's hard to tell who said it, but somebody mentioned that there was, it was phrased that there was a challenge for SIO with this development, and it was rephrased as is a challenge for Mr. Lutton. I agree with that sentiment. It's not, it's art, it's his as a developer.
Yes.
Secondly, as far as I know, and I asked last night at the end of the meeting, and I referred, received a affirmative response to my question. The city of Dexter is under no obligation to annex the, or how logical Mr. Lutton think that that annexation may be. And number three, I don't agree that the list of benefits that Mr. Lutton's presented is significant. I think most of those things are just things that you would come up with for any development at all. If it there, I look forward to working with the SIO Township Board. I'm hoping that we can have a little bit more dialogue. I was on the city council about fifteen or four twenty fifteen, and there was a point in time where we had some board-to-board meetings, some joint meetings where we had a lot of discussion that were productive, and I'm hoping that we can do that again in the future. So, thanks very much, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. That's just Rob Henson. Robbie, go ahead.
It's very unfortunate that you didn't have any public comment after the Eagle presentation. I had a lot of questions. And, and they were, they mentioned that the state soil engineer is designed to such and such. And my question is, when are the state engineers involved in the design of the system? When she said that their engineer is designed to blah, 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 what exactly are they designing? Are they at the beginning of the process? Does a private company design a system and then they evaluate that design? Are they not involved at all? How were the state engineers involved? What is the purpose of the denial of responsibility declaration? Why is that document required by the state at the beginning of the application process? And is that an irrelevant document considering the Department of Environmental Quality versus Worth Township in twenty twelve via the Supreme Court? And then what happens when a system fails? At what point is the township responsible? What are the number of private systems statewide? What are the number of violations statewide? What are the number of failures? These were all questions that I think were very appropriate, and it's unfortunate that we didn't get a chance to ask those at the time. And then, I hate to do this at the end of the night, but we'll have got to call out the gaslighting. You schemed for a year on the, the Lutton annexation process, and then you call out the clerk and say that she's too polarizing. That was pure gaslighting, and you got to cut that out. Thank you and good night.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I want to respond to Rob Henson. Rob, can you still hear me? Oh, wow. I had asked Eagle. Okay, okay. I had asked the Eagle representatives to address some of the issues you raised. They did not want to get into any legal issues or legal opinions, period. I think they talked with someone from the AG's office, and they were advised to not comment on any of that. But I had some of those same questions.
And just to, to piggyback on that, because I, I was thinking about that. And I know that the board is anxious to have heritage woods on the agenda. But I want to say, if we here have legal questions, you know, that we follow up questions for the Eagle technical experts or legal questions, we all need to get those asked and answered pretty quickly here is my suggestion.
So what's it going to come, what's it going to come to us as or for?
The, the two things that would be, that would be on the agenda for action items, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah.
So there's, there's the resolution to deny responsibility should, should something go wrong, whatever.
But how about substantive?
And then the other, the other big, big, big bundle is the final approval of the site plan.
So site plan approval.
No, no, no. P U D, sorry.
P U D approval?
Yeah.
Development agreement approval and approval of the wastewater development agreement, the whole thing.
Yeah, it's, it's a bundle of stuff that is the final site plan and P U D approval.
Okay.
We gave preliminary approval last year, and this is the final.
Does our ordinance or does our convention, our history, does it usually come back? Does our ordinance, or does our convention, our history, does it usually come back? Uh, you know, in two months, and ten months, and twelve months, is there a, whenever it's ready, what are the best practices, or what has our, how would we, how do we do that?
I mean, the final site.
Like, when does something come back?
Well, um, there probably is some kind of timeframe, because it's a P U D, um, and preliminary.
Is it up to us, is it up to the one, is it up to them, like, can the, can the developers say, hey, we want, we want you to do this, you know, we want it, we need a decision here?
They could say, we're feeling frustrated, but it's up to us.
Well, the, the, one thing that drives it is getting all of the different components of that bundled, you know, site plan done.
And I'm not trying to push it, or not trying to delay it, or expedite it, I'm just curious about when something comes, eh, you know, when is it ready to come to us?
I, I really believe it is up to our discretion ultimately.
It's a planning commission.
I think it is.
When they feel it's ready, they send it to us, then we vote.
Well.
It's always been that way.
They've done that.
It's always been that way.
Yeah, they've done that, it's been sent to us, and the thing that was taking a long time was getting all of, uh, development agreements in place, and in this case, there are two development agreements, one is for the wastewater treatment facility, and the other is for the site plan itself.
It's a P U D agreement.
It was on an agenda, probably three meetings back, and pulled off, so, I mean, uh, now some things have changed then, but, I mean, so it's, uh, I guess it's a question, is this group ready to hear it?
Right.
At, at some.
That is the question.
At some point, if we delay when it's already to be considered, then, um, I think that, that the developer could make an argument that we're.
That's not fair, we, we owe them a, a yea or nay based on rationale.
Yeah, and this has been, I, I would just observe, not having much experience in planning, that this is much more complicated, because it's the first private system, we just learned about it tonight, and then.
I agree.
And then also the benefits, community benefits, the development agreement, all of that. I mean, I, I don't even know if it's, it's finalized, is it?
It is, it's been finalized for, uh, a month or so now.
Well, well, no, um, so Mariah just sent this week the new draft for the wastewater treatment system development agreement.
That's right, I'm sorry, you raised, you raised substantive questions, and Mariah was working on them, so it, it, it seemed like it was ready, and then.
And then we still have to go over the P U D agreements, there are some issues with the P U D agreement, too.
In addition to the development agreement?
Yeah.
Kath- Kathy knows more about this stuff than I do, I will say, for, for me, reading the community, um, wastewater development agreement, that, that was really eye-opening for me. Um, that, that really told me more about the project that I was curious about than either of the other items.
Have you read the revised draft?
No, I haven't seen it.
It's much shorter.
Well, in any case, um, have we answered your question enough?
Yeah, thanks, move to adjourn.
No, no, Mark has a question.
Yes. Based on the most recent comments, my sense is that we are not ready to have it on, on the May ninth agenda.
I don't think we are.
I defer to you, Mark.
I, I'm gonna have.
I don't know enough about the pieces.
I guess, I don't wanna put it on an agenda and then have, or have it be on the agenda.
People calmly plan for it, then we pull it.
And, and not.
I don't wanna do that either.
Be ready to do that, and if we're ready, we find.
Well, it seems like there's legal questions.
We're gonna have some legal questions.
So let's try and resolve those, and if we can't resolve them, then we won't put it on the agenda.
And we have to.
It's fine, so how will we know when they're resolved?
Yeah, who's running point on this?
And I, and I, and I'm not trying to make this difficult and slay, but if we're making changes, then presumably we're gonna share those changes with the developers.
She's already done that, Mariah just shared the most recent draft of the onsite sewer development agreement with Alan Green, their attorney, that's already happened.
So what, are there other components that haven't been shared yet, or are they?
Yeah, P U D agreement.
Okay, so have, have, where does that stand, it sounds like you.
Mariah and I haven't met to discuss it. We have to set up our meeting, it'll, I think will occur early next week.
No, John, it's a good question, because I don't wanna be putting things on the agenda and taking them off if they're not ready, so.
I don't think anyone wants to do that.
And there're gonna be some legal questions, too. I mean, I had asked Eagle about this Michigan Supreme Court case dealing with township responsibility when an onsite sewer system goes bankrupt, whatever, and you know, they don't wanna talk about it, and I understand that, but we need to get more definition about what our responsibility will be. If one of these systems fails, is abandoned, the operator goes bankrupt, whatever.
Okay, well, I, um, clearly we have some questions to get answered, I, I, um, you know, Mark, maybe we can talk tomorrow about how to get answers to them as expeditiously as possible, it's.
Sounds like a likely no, though.
Well, I, I, I don't know, it's, it does seem sort of like a stretch that we're gonna get all of these things wrapped up between now and, and when we would have to make that decision. But, um, if you, trustee Noel, we'll continue to work with Mariah and try and move that along.
She just sent the new draft, like, yesterday.
Okay, all right.
But I will.
All right, in that case, um, unless there's another question, um, Mark? One, no, no, okay, all right.
To adjourn?
Yes.
My riser?
Right, riser, is there a second? There's a second and a third, from Noel and Carrie, um, all those in favor say aye, aye, that's closed, we are adjourned. Eleven forty-six.